We're going to go ahead and call the order of the City of Two Rivers City Council.
Council meeting for Monday, June 7th, 2021. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which we stand, a nation, one indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Jamie.
Kurt Andrews.
Here.
Mark Bitner.
Here.
Jeff Delkey.
Here.
Tracy Coach.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Jay Remicker.
Here.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Here.
And then Darla Leclerc and Adam Wuhusky are excused.
Yes, they are. They will not be joining us by phone either. Adam might be a little late, but I know Darla won't be here at all. So, thank you, and thanks for notifying us. So, let's move on to number five. We have invited guests. Greg, we have a swearing in of a patrol lieutenant and a new employee introductions. So, if you could come to the podium.
Yes, Chief Cole Meyer will come forward for the swearing in of our newest lieutenant, Jacob Glazer.
Jake, you've got to come up here. Let me stand all by myself. So, introducing Jake Glazer. His, they have different pronunciations, our last names. So, you might hear Glazier, you might hear Glazer. We all kind of interchange a little bit. But, so Jake Glazer, he's a Fox Valley Tech graduate. He's been an officer here since June of 2016. And, and since 2017, a school resource officer in the elementary school. He went through the selection process for lieutenant last year. And then, as a result of lieutenant openings we have this year, he has been approved from the Police and Fire Commission to be appointed as our newest lieutenant. Tonight with him is a number of his family in the audience, as well as girlfriend. And so, with that, I think we can do the swearing. Want me to hold it?
Um.
Sure. Stay out of the picture.
All right, so you're going to raise your right hand, and then you're going to repeat after me.
Can we do this?
I, Jake Glazer.
Hi, Jake Glazer.
Who have been appointed to the office.
Who have been appointed to the office.
Patrol lieutenant.
Of patrol lieutenant.
In and for the City of Two Rivers.
In and for the City of Two Rivers.
In Manitowoc County.
In Manitowoc County.
But have not yet entered.
But have not yet entered.
Upon the duties thereof.
Upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Upset office.
Upset office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. So help me God.
Congratulations.
We'll just do air fives. There you go, buddy. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Lieutenant Glazer.
Got it right? Sure.
Next up, we have two new employees, new full-time employees that we're happy to introduce. First, I would like to ask Terry Vosters, our Parks and Recreation Director, to come up for an introduction of our new park and, our new recreation clerk, Haley Bauer.
All right, we would like to introduce our new recreation office clerk. This is Haley Bauer. She's coming from dispatch from Winnebago County, and she started last week, Monday, and we selected her out of a great pool of applications, and so far, she is definitely exceeding all of our expectations. So, thank you, Haley.
Welcome.
Haley came on board.
Welcome addition to the staff there. Next up, Dave Casebeer, our wastewater director, to introduce our newest wastewater operator, Justin Meyer. Dave, Justin.
Introduce Justin. Justin started May 10th, came to Two Rivers with three and a half years of experience with MPU. He's fitting in work very well to the plant. I think he's going to be a great asset with help with our lab tech.
He was waiting to be sworn in, I think. I'm just kidding. You don't, Dave, around you with a pin. It just could be bad, but. All right. Thank you for introducing him. Thanks for bringing some, some new employees on to help our city continue to grow and provide great services. We're going to move to number six, which is public hearings. We have five public hearings tonight, so hang in there, bear with us. We do a series of three calls for those folks who want to participate in the building, and then we'll do three calls for those folks who are on the phone. We're also asking you to please come up to the podium, my right, your left. The mic is hot, so you can ask questions or give comments to any of the subjects, but we're going to do one hearing at a time. So, please wait till that hearing to comment, please. And I'll announce the phone numbers again, and Jamie will be taking the calls when we get to the start of the calls on the folks who are on the phones. So, we'll start with the first one, which is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend the municipal code, section 10-1-7B, to amend the definition of outdoor storage canopies, amend sections 10-1-15G, 4C4, and 10-1-15G, 4D3, regulating the storage canopies in rear and interior side yards, and amend the sections 1-2-1, regulating permit fees for storage canopies. So, I'm first looking for a motion to waive the reading and adopt the ordinance, so we can get on with the public hearing.
And then, if you would, Mr. President, our City Community Development Director Planner has some introductory slides or slide on each that will hopefully be helpful, perhaps after the council gets the motion on the floor.
That'd be great.
And just before public input.
Okay. She'll do that for each one of these, Greg?
Uh, yes.
Go for this first one for sure, and the second one, I would leave.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, Greg, as we go through these, and we'll make it as clear as we can for everybody what the public hearings are. Hi, Adam.
Hi, Kurt.
All right. So, I'm looking for a motion to waive the reading on the first one and adopt the ordinance. We'll do a motion, a second discussion, and then we'll go into a public hearing. Mark?
Mr. President, I made the motion to adopt a, yeah.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? We'll bring it up to, we'll let Elizabeth go ahead and add your commentary.
Um, do you want to, would you find it really good?
Oh, I'm sorry. View slideshow. No, we got it.
Well, and that's, I have a slide presentation for a couple of them, like I mentioned, so we'll start with this public hearing A. So, I just wanted to summarize, and I don't have a hard copy, so I'm going to have to look up here. So, it said a couple of different items that we needed to modify, and so I broke it down to make it a little bit easier. So, the section one that is being modified is the definition of, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. I apologize. There are a couple of sections that are being modified here tonight for your review and approval or not approval, but the first section is the definition. And so, what was proposed in this is to change the definition, section one is to add without walls. So, right now, they're with or without walls. So, that is the change in yellow here. So, I wanted to point that out for you for the section one change. And can we go to the next slide, Greg? And then, section two is a little bit about when you have your canopy. So, and that's what it pertains to for section two. So, it is duplicated because, as mentioned in the public hearing, it's about where they are, and they're allowed in rear yards or inside yards. So, it's about when you get your canopy and when those changes would be affected. But I did have a picture here. So, this is an example of what pertaining to section one. So, here's one without walls, and here is what was added for with walls. So, everyone knows kind of what we're talking about here. Okay? And then, if we can go to the next slide, Greg, please? And so, for, going back to when they are permitted or erected, the canopies, if they are allowed to be, if they're permitted after tonight, June 7th, until January 1, 2023, that's new, some additional conditions have been proposed. So, all of these bullet points are new to those sections for rear and interior where they are still permitted. And the new ones are, shall not be located on a parcel with a garage, shall be removed prior to a change in ownership of a property, garbage and refuse shall not be allowed to be stored in the canopy, shall be maintained in a reasonable state of repair, shall require a permit to install in accordance with the fee, which is another change, and then, any violation of these shall result in the, having to remove your canopy. So, these are new conditions that are proposed. One more slide, please. Thank you. So, wrapping this up, the fee schedule is also changed or proposed to be changed from $10, which it is now, to $50. And then, the last change for your consideration is that no new canopy permits would be issued after January 1, 2023. So, that means if you have one, you keep it, and if you have a permit up until January 1, you can get one of 2023. But after that date, no more new ones would be issued. So, that is what is contained in your packet tonight.
Thank you for explaining that. I thank you for explaining that to the public. Because we're in discussion, I think we should just go right into the general call here for the public hearing before we make a vote at the end of going both in three rounds inside and three rounds outside. So, how it's going to work again, reminder, I'll do three calls. Please step up to the podium, my right, your left. The microphone is on, and state anything you want to state in regards to this public hearing. And third call. Jamie, if you're ready, we're going to go to the phones. We'll do the same thing. Again, please state your name and address. You do not have to step up to the podium because you're on the phone, but just be clearly, please. And we'll start with the first call for the phones. The number again is 920-793-5538. That's 920-793-5538. And third and final call. Okay, hearing, no one from the public, both inside the building as well as on the phones. I'm going to open up for any more discussion for council now that we've heard from Elizabeth some of the modifications in the ordinance. Any discussion? Bonnie?
Yeah, I don't know if, I think I'm going to vote no just because of that deadline. And I know they planned, talked about this in the plan commission, that there would be no more permits. Part of that is because they collect things. As the wind blows, stuff collects. And I guess I just don't want to see a run on canopies, the way they did a run on golf carts. Soon as we said yes, everybody got them. Just my opinion.
Thank you, Jeff.
Just to be clear, is this like, okay, for instance, say I want to store my four-wheelers outside, and I build a three-sided building with a roof over the top of it, but the front is open. Would that be considered one of these canopies?
The material that it's allowed is in the definition, so if we go back, it's, it has to be the polyurethane. It cannot be permanently affixed to the ground. That defines what the canopy can be.
Okay.
So, it's a temporary deal.
If you were building a shed or shelter.
Sorry.
That would be different than a canopy.
That's something else, and that has a different standard, so that's, that's not what we're talking about.
Thank you for asking that. Thanks for clarifying that, Elizabeth. Any other discussion? Mark?
My microphone isn't working, but the only question I have is, why did we have to increase the fee from $10 to $50? Why do we have to increase the fee from $10, $50, when they're just written changes on the ordinance?
Because the time to inspect the canopies.
Time to what?
Inspect the canities, canopies is greater than the $10 fee that's been issued. So, when they will be going out each year to check the status and the condition, that's why we have the $50 fee proposal.
So, the, the additional walls caused a $40 increase in inspection?
I believe we included an inspection with this.
Yes, we did.
So, we didn't previously?
So, there's going to be an inspection now for them annually. So, that's going to be more staff time.
Okay. So, the increased cost is because now it's an annual inspection versus previously, we didn't inspect it annually.
Other than complaint driven.
And even to do an initial inspection to make sure an installation is in keeping with the code, may not hit 50, but it's going to cost more, much more than 10 to send a person in a vehicle out. If I could add a comment to as a plan commission member, and I know Mr. Wuhusky could probably comment on this as well, as staff reported back to the plan commission, many communities have outright prohibited any more of these outdoor storage structures, fabric-covered storage structures in their communities. They've found, you know, unlike a garage or a traditional accessory building that you would construct, they start to tear, well, everything you build starts deteriorating from day one, but these can deteriorate pretty rapidly. So, many communities have seen fit to prohibit them. We addressed provisions in the code governing these maybe two or three years ago, did not allow them with side walls to try to reduce that storage thing going on, but we were confronted with a specific situation where a very nice person, property owner, did not have a garage, their neighbors had gifted them a storage canopy with sides that flat out was not legal under the current code. And I think, well, I think it's fair to say the sentiment of the plan commission is ultimately to, as this ordinance reflects, not allow any more of these, that in the interest of fully informing the community that that was coming and what the standards are for installation during the time that you can still get a permit, and you're right, Bonnie, it could, I mean, in theory, it might result in a run on these, but remember, those conditions include that they can't be located on your parcel if you have a garage. It's intended for properties that don't have garages. There is that provision that it doesn't, the permit doesn't run with the land, it would run with the owner who gets the permit. Obviously, no storage of garbage or refuse, I'm just repeating the rest. But there was a general sentiment that we don't want to see these proliferating in the community, but let's give every, everybody fair notice of what the requirements are going forward, and that there is a specific end date beyond which you can't put a new one up. That was the intent. Adam?
I'll just double off. I'll just double.
I don't think it's.
There we go. I'll just double off what Greg said there. We were, we were addressing a specific need for a storage canopy for a person that didn't have a garage, and we were looking at this and looking around town and seeing a lot of these, and they're not the most appealing thing to look at, especially if you're a neighbor to someone that has it. And when you went to some of these houses, you would see a garage full of junk, and then they would store their car under this canopy, or sometimes even store junk in the canopy. And that's kind of the reason why we want to see them kind of go away, but at the same time, we want to help a lady who doesn't have a garage. And that's part of the reason why we put that in the new conditions, that the parcel cannot have a garage existing. So, they're not using this to store junk, garbage, cans. I've seen people that have put cans under there, just bags and bags and bags of them. And, and nobody as a neighbor, I don't think, really wants to look at that. So, that's kind of the reason why we chose a date to kind of say, no more after this, but if you keep your canopy in good condition, you can have it until you, until you sell.
So, if I'm reading this right, we're giving them really a year and a half to be able to file for new canopies if they need to?
Correct.
Okay. That's a very gracious period of time, from my point of view.
Yeah. I mean, and like Greg said, there's a lot of communities that flat light, flat out say none, but I think they, staff came back with a few that had ending dates, or I think Elizabeth did, that a couple that were ending. And that's where we came up with that ending timer, Elizabeth did.
We, we propose that they are given a little bit of time, but ultimately, it's to meet your goal of to increase value and not create more problems with maintenance and areas that need attention. And this is not driven just by one person, it was raised by that, but we're creating an ordinance that will benefit the entire community.
Well, I want to make sure the public hears, in fact, that if I have one erected, say, December of 2022, it does not have to come down on January of 2023, correct?
It does not. It does not. It means for anything new, anything in the future.
Making sure. Anything new between now and January 1, 2023, following these guidelines.
Correct.
Are, would be acceptable. Again, and then, the only way it switches off is if there's a removal of ownership.
On the parcel.
On the parcel itself, right? Or the inspection happens and it looks like it's torn and tattered and everything else, right?
Right. If it's a maintenance problem, correct.
Got it. Okay. Just want to make sure it's clear. Adam?
Good question raised that I don't think we talked about at Plan Commission. If somebody has one of these canopies and they want to put it up for the weekend for a party, grad party or whatever, because they're, they're not going to rent a tent, but they have a canopy, that is not addressed or prohibited under this because it's not something that's staying up, it's just being used temporarily.
Correct.
Okay.
That's not what this is.
Yeah, yeah, right. I just wanted to make sure, because that was never talked about like that.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a good, there's a lot of those where people will put up a temporary party tent, if you would, in the backyard, and it's not designed to be up more than probably a weekend or week.
Yep.
Or for a wedding, or seasonal.
No, I'm not doing it. Like a backyard pergola that you see, or gazebo. I don't think this is really intended to prohibit those kind of seasonal yard structures.
Hey, great. Thank you for clarifying that. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Jamie, you're up.
Chris.
Yes.
Tracy Coach.
Hi.
Bill Leclerc.
No.
Jay Remicker.
No.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
No.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
S is five to three.
Thank you. Thank you, Plan Commission, for also presenting this and doing all the backend work. Let's go to the second public hearing tonight. Public hearing on conditional use permit to operate a small wind energy system in the one or I-2 industrial district in the Woodland Industrial Park, submitted by Ian Slager of Slager Holdings LLC, DBA. All Energy Management is the buyer, and the City of Two Rivers is the property owner. Again, we'll do the same thing. We'll have three calls of folks in the facility. Again, step up to the podium, my right, your left. Please speak into the microphone, give us your name and address. And before we begin that exercise, I want a motion to waive the reading and approve the conditional use permit. We'll do the motion, the second, then we'll have the discussion, which will be the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Adam. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jay. Do you want to set this up, Elizabeth, or are we going to go right into the?
I can do a description.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that, and we'll do that before we go to the public hearing.
Okay. What we have here is a request for conditional use related to a small wind energy system, just as you described, and it is for the Woodland Industrial Park. So, wind energy ordinance requires a conditional use for the placement of these for side yards, and that was modified already. So, this project that we have, this is proposed for two wind turbines in the street sideyard at the corner of Woodland Drive and 310. So, if we could go to the next slide, please? So, here is a rendering of the proposed location for everyone to see. This is Woodland Drive to orient you, this is 310. The proposed structure is back there. It does not exist now, but this is what it's proposed to look like. And the two turbines are located, if you can see those, right there. That is the proposed location of the small wind turbines. So, if we could go to the next slide, please? So, if you can tell turbine A and turbine B here, and our applicant has put in the measurements, so they meet the distance, 210, 210, from the streets and the sideyard here, which is where they're permitted, but they do meet the requirements for the distance, and 130 over there, and that's based on the height, it's 1.1 times the height. So, if we could go one more slide, Greg, please? Just to give you an idea of what the turbines look like, turbine A and turbine B, that's the two, one is going to be 170 feet in height, and one is going to be 110 in height. And that is the summary of the proposal for the two turbines. And what the conditional use proposed for you today is about the location being permitted in the side yard.
Thank you.
So, that's the summary, and if you have any questions, we do have our applicant here tonight, too.
Okay, great. All right. So, public hearing's going to open up. I'm looking for the first call. Again, please step up to the podium, name and address. And third and final call. Thank you. We're going to go to the phones. Again, the phone number is 920-793-5538, 920-793-5538. Jamie will be manning the phone call, phones. Again, give us your name and address, and we'll do first call right now. And third and final call. Okay, thank you. We'll move on. Any discussion from council regarding what we've heard from Elizabeth, or what's in the ordinance you may have questions on? Adam?
I'm not a big wind tower guy. I don't think they look all that appealing, and I certainly don't like the location of this. Is there any reason why it couldn't be bumped to the opposite side of the building versus being on Highway 310 as you come into the city?
I think I'm going to turn to the applicant for the logistics as to where they place them on the site. Based on the rendering, I'm going to guess he's going to say, in terms of the design, this is the best location, but I'll turn it over to him.
This is Ian Slager, everyone. Hi.
Hi, Ian.
Yeah, so it actually has to do with the prevailing wind direction. So, we typically, in the direction where the wind is normally coming from, we don't want to put a building or trees or something in, in between that direction and the turbines, which is why they're placed here.
Are they higher than the building?
They are, but there's, there's actually a calculation for how tall a building would be and how far you'd have to put it from that building. So, even if the building is, you know, say, 24 feet and the turbines are 170, there's still a wind shear effect, it's called. So, for example, if you had flat concrete, that would be the best case. If you had short grass, that would actually affect wind even at 170. Not a lot. If you would have brush or trees, you know, it still does affect it at, at the hub height for production and for maintenance. So, the goal is the least amount of obstructions as possible.
Thank you. Any other questions? Sure. I'm going to ask council, can I go right there? Can we ask for a change and allow the public to join in here?
Suspend rules.
Okay. So, I'm going to suspend the rules and allow, I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow the public to entertain. One more time?
I'll motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Sir, you can join in right now. Go ahead, ask your question, please. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
This is a public meeting, so council and folks watching at home would want to hear. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I just wanted to ask, were these for private use, or are you selling this back to the public, or what's the reason you want this there?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, that's a good question. So, we are a renewable energy company. We maintain turbines, manufacture parts, we sell them all over the country and internationally. Um, so the goal is to put our, in our headquarters here, so majority of electricity would offset our building's use. Um, pretty close, I'd say within 10%, you know, one year we might be short 10%, one year we might make 10% over it, which means we sell it back to the utility being, I guess, the city. Uh, yeah, we try to, usually try to size a wind energy system to be pretty close to the building's consumption of electricity, if that makes sense.
But it'll be tied into the grid, but not built with the intent of being a net exporter of power off-site.
Yep, 100%, yep. And, and the building is all, will also be, the goal is all electric, not even have gas lines to it, so it'll have electric heat, everything electric to maximize the, maximize the usage of the turbines. So that's used onsite is, is typically the most efficient way.
Thank you. Now that we suspended the rules, do I need to make a motion, Jack, to go back through our discussion? Thank you. Looking for some advice. I'll bring it back to the discussion of council, any other questions we have? Mark?
Um, I'm curious, with that information I just learned, you're going to use it for your own purposes if there's an excess, uh, generation of electricity, to put it back into the grid itself. Uh, is there a cost, and this is a dumb, perhaps dumb question, but do we incur a cost to the city to hook up, uh, energy to assume into the grid, or is that, um, how does that work? I guess I don't really understand. In other words, any, you don't?
Mr. Dellman, our electric director, has had a dialogue with Mr. Slager, and I expect, well, they both can address it, we'll get Brian up here.
So in regards to, it'd be similar to like a solar panel on a roof for a residential, or similar to the Grace Church, uh, system that they have right now. If they produce more than what they consume, they actually get money back from, you know, the utility to offset their installation and their cost, is what it is. So if this system goes in place and he produces more than he consumes, he would actually make money on the system. So we do not actually charge him to have his system in place. Is that what you're asking?
So, in other words, the power gener- the power generated doesn't benefit anyone else, it just allows him a credit for?
Correct, it's a credit for him.
Okay.
Yep, he put the investment in for his, his.
Purpose.
Parcel and property, so he will actually have a credit, yes.
And Brian, am I correct, the Public Service Commission basically sets the rules on that?
They set, they set the rates, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sure.
Any other questions? Adam, do you have a question?
Are, are they, it says the city of Two Rivers is the property owner, are we selling that property, or are we holding that property and allowing them to use it for the wind turbines?
We currently own the property right now, we will be selling it to him pending approval of this conditional use. It's tied to him moving forward with this project, it's essential.
It's expected the entirety of the site would be owned by Mr. Slager's company, if everything goes forward. Yeah, the city wouldn't be holding title to that corner.
And that includes then possibly building the building, which is going to be new, too, right?
Right, that's the next step in the site approval process, but this is the first step.
Thank you.
Yeah, the towers don't hap- the building, excuse me, the top wind, the wind turbines don't happen unless it's in tandem with the building. I should point out, too, now this, it's already zoned industrial, it's our industrial park, um, because there's a conditional use required for wind turbines, and it was required under the old ordinance if they were placed in the backyard. Now they can potentially, with approval of a conditional use by council, conditional use permit go in the front, uh, or street side yard. Um, but this, uh, the review of the building plans and site plans will still go through the normal site architectural plan review. At Plan Commission, they're the final approval body for that, and will also be reviewed for compliance with, uh, industrial park covenants by the CDA as well. And we'll try to set that up as a joint meeting of those two bodies, we've done that in the past, just in the interest of customer service, so we don't drag someone to two meetings, but one instead.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, Jamie, you're up again with a roll call.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wohusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and welcome to Two Rivers. We're, we're getting there, right? Step one, okay. Awesome, let's go to number C, which is a public hearing on the ordinance to amend municipal code sections 10 dash 1 dash 26B1 to allow boat sales, service, and storage with no outdoor operations as a permitted use in the B3 business district, and amend sections 10 dash 1 dash 26B2 to allow boat sales, service, and storage with outdoor operations as a conditional use in the B3 business district. Now that's a mouthful, so I'm sure that Elizabeth will explain it once we get to a motion and a second, and let her bring that up again. So do I have a motion to waive the reading and adopt the ordinance as stated?
Make that motion, Kurt.
Thank you, Bill, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy, let's let Elizabeth explain again, a little bit more detail on this, before we go to the public hearing. Elizabeth?
Okay, um, this one is fairly easy in that this is just a modification to keep the entire B1, or all the business districts consistent. So we have updated them to allow boat sales, service, and storage, no outdoor operations as a permitted use in all three, so B1, B2, and B3 will allow that as a permitted. And then the proposal is to then add in each one as a conditional use, the same boat sales, service, and storage with outdoor. So the conditional component there is that the, we would be able to review the conditional, the conditions attached to having that outdoor piece, so it's not going to be, you know, things strewn about, we will be able to look at it and see what the boat sales and storage looks like in each of these districts. But the intent is to keep it consistent and allow that use to promote, you know, the fact that we are a water community, and allow these things in the commercial areas, but be consistent.
Thank you. Elizabeth, if I might, the B3 is Memorial Drive business?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. Let's go to the public hearing again. I'm going to repeat myself, uh, because I need to for each one of these, but we're doing a, three calls with the folks inside the building, please come to the podium, my right, your left, state your name and address, and then we'll go to the phones. So first call on the public hearing that we just discussed. And third and final call. All right, Jamie, if you're ready, we're going to go to the phones. Again, the phone number, just to remind everybody out there, 920-793-5538, 920-793-5538. First call, please state your name and address when you call in. And third and final call. Thank you, we'll go back to discussion, any council members have anything they want to bring up regarding this ordinance? Seeing no discussion, Jamie, you're up again, roll call.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wohusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Frank. Getting in, we'll go to number D, which is a public hearing on the conditional use permit related to continued operation of Patsy's Mobile Highway 42 Mart in the B-dash-one business district at 816 22nd Street, submitted by Patsy, I think it's Wallish? Did I say her name right?
Yes.
Thank you. Patsy Wallish, who's the property owner, and I am not even going to try on the buyer, um, and I apologize in advance, um, I will spell it, L-E-K-H-A-T-I-M-I-L-S-A-I-N-A of Lipu Cake, Lipu Lake LLC, I think that's how you say it.
I think so, I just know the gentleman by, by his nickname of Lake, he also operates the, uh, is it a mobile, the, the sea store on Mishkot Road?
Hey, great, thank you, and I apologize if I, if I didn't attempt to butcher your name, I tried not to do that, but, uh, I'm looking for a motion to waive the reading and approve the conditional use permit, we'll do the motion, the second, and then we'll have discussion. Motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jeff, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion, do we need to have this set up by Elizabeth, or are we okay to go?
I think we're pretty much okay on this. Again, this is the, essentially the same conditional use permit and conditions that were approved for Patsy's. That conditional use permit was specific to that ownership, it didn't run with the property, it needed a CU for both gasoline sales and, uh, car washes, so, uh, essentially, with a new owner, a request that the status quo, as far as the, uh, conditional use, be approved again.
Okay, great, thank you. So we'll have to do that every time an owner switches, is that, is that the case?
I believe, is this one specific to the owner as well, please? Yes.
Okay, thank you for that, I just want the public to know that's why we do these, it's a change of ownership, so, um, let's go to the public hearing for the folks in the building again. Three calls, step up to the podium, my right, your left, use the microphone, state your name and address. Second call. And third and final call. Jamie, we're going to the phones again, we'll do three calls on the phones, again, 920-793-5538. If this was the public hearing you're waiting for, here's the phone number again, 920-793-5538. Please state your name and address. And third and final call. Any other questions by council? Mark?
I, I was just curious, does this include then his ability to sell alcoholic beverages? Does that come with this?
I don't believe you, you don't need a conditional use permit for anything pertaining to the sale of alcoholic beverages. Correct me if I'm wrong, Elizabeth, but the two uses that require a CU are, again, uh, gasoline sales and, uh, operation of a car wash.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, Jamie, roll call, please.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wohusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have one more public hearing, we're on our final one here, bringing it home. Public hearing on the ordinance to repeal and recreate municipal code section 10 dash 4 dash 18B4B related to off-premises ground signs permitted in business district, and sections 10 dash 4 dash 18C3 and 4 related to on-premises and off-premises signs permitted in industrial districts. These provisions are unintentionally listed incorrectly during the 2020 code codification process. We just got done doing that, and apparently we're cleaning up a little bit of what was done incorrect. Uh, do you want to address this, anybody from, uh, city staff? Just a simple switch, change of order, okay? All right, we're going to go ahead and go, uh, I need a motion to waive the reading and adopt the ordinance, and again, we'll do the same thing, I need a motion and a second, and then public hearing.
I'll make the motion to waive the reading and adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Jay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff, I got a motion, a second. Um, now we're going to go to public hearing, uh, it's pretty self-explanatory, so we'll do three calls, again, come up to the podium, my right, your left, name and address. And second call. And third and final call. Jamie, if you're ready, we'll go to the phones, again, 920-793-5538. I could ask everybody in the audience to repeat this number, you've heard it many times, it's 920-793-5538. Please state your name and address. And second call. And third and final call. Any other discussion by city council on this issue? Seeing none, Jamie, roll call.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wohusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, everybody, for participating and going through this exercise of public hearings tonight. Let's move to number seven, input from the public. Uh, again, if you want to come to the podium, my right, your left, state your name and address, we'll take any input on things that are on the agenda right now, or things you want on future agendas, uh, if you could address that to council, that'd be great, and then we'll go to the phone lines in a little bit. So I'm looking for anybody who wants to address council right now, come to the podium.
Mr. Lucas, the gentleman that had sent the email.
Yes.
This would be the appropriate time for his input, if he wished to address?
Yes, that would be appropriate time, but we also probably all would have commented on it as letters and communication from citizens.
Okay, just so council didn't have to suspend rules later on to allow?
No, he can come up right now if he wants to do that, Mr. So input from the public, Mr. Lucas, if you want to join to the podium, my right, your left.
Hi, my name is J.J. Lucas, you want to read my address, 2009 Lincoln Street.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Uh, I sent, I think, all of you, hopefully I got everybody, an email today, I had a document in there, I don't know if anybody had a chance to read it.
Yeah, I, I believe everybody in council was copied, and I did get a chance to read it, in fact, I would make a recommendation, we get it on an agenda, a future agenda, and have the right people here to be able to address it with you, uh, but I did read it, so thank you for sending it, and thank you for your concern. So if you want to go through, in summary, what it is you're proposing to get it on an agenda, that would be great, Mr. Lucas.
Okay, um, I mean, the short and sweet version is, uh, we're trying to do a program that state mandated to get backflow of water that could be contaminated out of our system. I get it, I support this, I like this, uh, but I think the manner in which we've gone about doing it could use some tweaking. I think we could improve, and I think we can do this better and more efficiently, and probably for less money.
Okay, and by the way, that's what he stated, if you haven't read the memo yet, that's what you eloquently stated in your memo, some suggestions, which is great, because some people just say things that are wrong, but don't give a solution. You actually gave some solutions, which we really appreciate.
Yes, sir.
Um, so I would recommend, if that makes sense, who on city staff would be the one who could help shepherd this and address his issues?
It's a, it's a program under the Water Department, so between Mr. Blaha, perhaps in consultation with the city attorney, because there are some questions about the, uh, the enforcement mechanisms that are cited, uh, we can, uh, we can share that, uh, understanding if it is listed on an agenda as an item, then of course, I'm not telling you anything, but the council can then engage in discussion of it. We're, understand, Mr. Lucas, tonight about all the council could do is note, receipt of the complaint, and, and intake it, but, uh, two weeks from tonight, uh, June 21st, it can be listed as an agenda item that would allow for full discussion and direction.
Yeah, we don't need to make a motion to put it on the agenda item right now, do we?
Um, I'll state for the record, I, I'll, it will be on the agenda for the 21st.
Thank you, I just want to make sure.
Yep.
That, and the right people to address it.
Yeah, unless one of those right people, or Mr. Lucas cannot be here, or we've come to realize between now and then that they can't, but I'm, that works for you, sir.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so two weeks from today, it'll be what?
21st.
21st?
Yes.
Does that work for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you for sending that in, and I thought that would be the best, as we acknowledge it, and we'll get it on the agenda.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for doing it, too. Any other input from public? Again, join us at the front podium. State your name and address. A.C., none in person, let's go to the phone lines again, Jamie. 920-793-5538 is the number, and we are taking input from the public on any agenda items or items you'd like on future agendas. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to number eight, council communications, letters and other communications from citizens. I'll open it up to the council. Adam?
I received an email regarding the possible repaving of the Washington Park bike path. They said it's in rough shape, and I suggested that I would talk to it, talk about it at council, and maybe bring that up to engineering to maybe report on that for next time.
Did you hear that?
There was a complaint about the bike path or the bike trail inside Washington Park needing some work, some repaving. They were looking to see if that could get on possibly the next budget. Repaving.
Okay, repaving. Thank you for clarifying.
A lower level where it flooded, or was flooded last year due to the high water levels?
I think that's part of it. They just said the trail in general, so that's gonna include it, but it may be.
I can tell you, and of course, we also have a lot of area down there that where there used to be turf that's mud right now, and Terry Vosters, the Parks and Rec Director, and I are set to walk that Wednesday morning this week to see what needs doing, both in terms of turf and vegetation restoration, any equipment. We'll add the trail condition to our list as well.
I told him I'd bring it up and ask engineering, because it's certainly not in this year's budget, but something that could get talked about for next year's budget.
Right. And again, I'll state for the record, and Jamie will remind me, which really helps. We'll put that on the agenda for the 21st, first staff report back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other communications from citizens? Jeff?
Yeah, I had several. First one was with Mr. Lucas. We had a lengthy conversation. I'm glad you came and stood up and voiced your opinion on that. And another one was, I had a woman call me and wanted to know if it would be possible, since some of these meetings go so long, to get the city managers' report at the very end, rather than in the beginning, because it does take up sometimes substantial time, and they're in limited time, and they want to get back to sleep.
Okay.
And? That doesn't bother them, does it?
I understand.
And then there was one more. A citizen had talked to me about, she lived on, I believe, 18th Street, and her garbage, she had two cans out there, stickers on both of them, and one of them wasn't picked up. Well, Friday, she knew somebody on the north side, took the garbage on the north side, they didn't have no problem getting picked up. I don't know what the issues could possibly be, but I have heard that from other people, too.
And imagine. I guess I would encourage those people, it's useful to call the council member. Manage, walk, disposal is the city's hauler, and I've always found, of course, maybe they would be responsive when city hall calls, but we do encourage people to be directly in touch with them, or contact the city manager's office of the Public Works Department, because if it's the same day, we can get them back out there. I can't imagine. And typically, if they don't pick something up, they leave notice, you know, like if you put the wrong recyclables.
Yeah, she said there was no nothing, but they took it just fine on the north side.
Huh, no discrimination intended there.
Oh, okay. But that's good advice, if there's a problem, they could contact the Public Works.
There are times, there are times when, I mean, folks always have the option of contacting council members, but if, like in this case, the hauler, or if, obviously, it's a garbage day, it's a business day here, get on the horn, and if they're still out there, they can circle back around or make some arrangement. Yeah.
Bonnie?
I just wanted to say, I've called the garbage people, and they came back and picked something up for me. I don't remember what happened, but we had a problem in our neighborhood of people stealing those tickets for the garbage. I don't know if that's what happened to her. Do you know if it was still on the second one?
It was still on both of them.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying that sometimes that happens, unfortunately. I don't know what you do about that. I mean, people stealing the garbage, the stickers.
Yeah, this sounds like a different incident, but you're right. We talked about that, I think, a year ago, where someone had stickers on a sofa, and someone came by and ripped it. I remember that conversation. So please, when people put stickers on things at the trash, please let them get their trash picked up. Jay, you have a question?
I have two people contacted me, of two different things. One was the person was wondering about the street line painting this year. Are we doing it? You know, last year, it said something about they skipped it, or whatever. They were just wondering if they're gonna?
We're doing it, and from what I understand, street marking started today.
Okay.
Yep. The DPW, a full-timer that normally does striping, just got back from vacation, and a new summer employee that's gonna be assisting him, started today. Yep, so we are behind. Yep.
And then the other one was parking at the beach. Is there something we can do to help litigate that, I guess, as well? Have any ideas? Please forward them to us, because we could use them.
And hopefully, over this year, that's something the city and the rec board look at as far as long-term solutions, because we've talked about the little utilized ball field there being used for space in the meantime. I don't know that council wants us to go out, well, A, we don't have a budget on that either, but we need a plan for that. The only other advice is walk a little bit, and you can still get there.
But I know last year, I think to Jay's point, I think last year we did a lot of roping off of different areas. We at least tried to get a few more parking spots. I don't know if that's the plan this year.
That may be a good idea, because as we saw this weekend, people were appropriating their own spots in the no-parking areas on the turf, so.
And whether we then encroach a little bit of the ball field area, I think we did that last year, too, where we took a little bit of the grass area, but with the summer starting already, and we're already having a little bit of an issue, I think whatever we can do to address roping off, I think it's a good question.
Say what? I'm sure Terry and her staff will be tackling it. We just opened up Memorial Day weekend, of course, too cold to go to the beach, and this past weekend was nuts, but yeah.
Adam?
I'm the ARB board, so Terry's in back. I think that'd be a good thing to jump on our agenda. We can start tomorrow, when we could get to the bottom, and any input from any board members, and then hopefully tackle that in July.
Great, perfect. Thank you for that. Any other? Mark?
Based on a situation that happened to me over the weekend, I was encouraged, I shared it, I was encouraged to review quickly a life-saving technique, and I want to share that. I've asked help.
You're on.
I've asked help. Our fire chief is gonna help me demonstrate this, but Saturday was my wedding anniversary. My wife and I went sightseeing, visited its town in southern Wisconsin, and we had a nice day viewing different locations, and during dinner, I had an unfortunate situation that turned out well, but it could have been really serious, have techniques. And my wife and I were having dinner at a supper club, and she was eating steak, and she got a piece of steak caught in her throat, and she started choking. I asked her, Betty, can you talk? No, she shook her head. She couldn't talk. I said, can you breathe? No, she couldn't breathe. So I got up right away, and I thought I knew all about Heimlich. Well, I didn't really know it well. I got up, and she was seated, and I tried it, and it wasn't working. Thank God, he was watching us. There was a nurse sitting at a table right behind us. She tapped me on the shoulder and said, can I help? So based on that, I don't remember the last time I saw really the correct way of doing a Heimlich, so I thought, and I was encouraged to share that, let's have a demonstration now, and an expert's gonna show us how to do this Heimlich maneuver to save a life.
So, just what I want to touch base with before is doing the Heimlich maneuver. Obviously, there's a couple signs normally when people can't breathe. Usually, the international sign for choking is they go like this, they can't mutter any words, usually they'll start turning blue. If possible, it's best to stand them up, because you get the most amount of leverage. What you want to do is you want to take your dominant hand, I'm a righty, so I'm gonna take my right, you're gonna make a fist with it, and then your left hand, you're gonna place over it. You want to put that right about at their belly button. What you're gonna do is you're gonna create a J motion, so you're gonna go in and up as you thrust with them, okay? And then you're gonna do that until hopefully the obstruction comes out, and then they'll be able to breathe again. If not, if they end up passing out, you can ease them to the floor and then continue the same motion as you're straddling them. So for a demonstration, what you would do is you would come underneath the arms of the patient, you would use your fist, and then you would, it's a pretty violent maneuver, but you're gonna thrust their whole body up as you go and expel that piece of food from them choking, so. The fire department does offer CPR classes through American Heart Association. If anybody's interested, we can teach them not only CPR, but the Heimlich maneuver and first aid as well. You're welcome to call the fire department, we'll set up a time, and we can run you through a class.
Thank you. I'll also tell you, another signal is when you get kicked under the table, too, by your wife, that she needs help. Thank you very much. It's important, and I don't recall at the moment, it happened so fast, I didn't recall what to do exactly, I didn't stand her up correctly, and I didn't do the J motion. The nurse, fortunately, again, knew what to do in that situation and saved the night for us, so thank you.
Thank you for allowing that demonstration. Happy anniversary. It was. Any other input from citizens? Jeff?
Yes, I forgot one. I had a conversation with a citizen about their utility bill. Due to auto pay, somehow it got messed up for a month or two, and he was gonna come back and try and pay, and wanted to do half one month, and then the balance, the final. Well, that apparently wasn't good enough, and the city wanted $300 every week until it was paid. I thought we were, after this pandemic, we were gonna be a little more lenient with people.
Is this the first? Can you pass that information out from the citizen to city staff?
Yeah, look up Mr. Lucas.
Dave, us? Dave is raising his hand.
After the meeting.
So Jeff, if you could pass the name of the Dave, and see if we can do, if we can circle back around.
Okay. We'll be happy to address that. Dave can look into the details.
Thanks for bringing that up. Again, like anything, we're trying to be as civil as we can to everybody who has issues, and especially cash flow. Any other comments, communications? I've got a couple, but I'll hold off till the end. Tracy, you got anything?
No, I had similar calls on the payment and such.
Thank you. Two things. First of all, two citizens called and complained about the motel on Memorial Drive. It was a late night, about 2:00, 2:30, yelling, screaming, cars screeching, besides the appearance of the hotel, and I'm just telling you what citizens told me. What can we do to get tougher on any type of ordinances with the condition of the hotel, and what it looks like from Memorial Drive, if anything? And what can they do when the late night screaming and yelling and things are happening? I told, my recommendation there is let the police know right away. Don't hold it off and call me three days later and tell me about it. There's nothing I can do at that point, but just to let you know that there are some complaints and there's some concerns, especially with some people who've got businesses there as well during the day. But their biggest thing right now is the condition and the appearance of the hotel, and is there anything we can be doing from the street to beautify that at all? Again, serving it up.
We'll have some staff discussion on that in follow-up.
Right. Last but not least, I want to give a compliment, because it actually came from a lady at Washington Highlands. Russ, are you back there? There was a phone call I made to Russ from a citizen who lives in Washington Highlands. Now, Washington Highlands is not city-owned property, it's privately owned, but it was a water leak that was happening, and I didn't know what to do, and this lady happens to be near and dear to me, because she's my mom, and I said, let me call the water department and see if they can look at it. So Russ comes out, and then he has a couple of his staff members come out, and they identify that there was a problem and a leak underneath the ground. Now, it's not city, but they at least gave direction to the HOA folks to let them know what they should do to take steps to be able to get this at least looked at. But I want to give compliments, because we didn't have to do it. You did. She's grateful, and that's my mom. Thanks. I'll move on. That showed, by the way, the reason I get choked up about it is, we go above and beyond in the city, and it's not even the city's responsibility. Great job.
Well done. Well done.
All right. Thank you for letting me digress for a minute. City council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. By the way, I'm a sap, so if I, it's just, that's what I do. I am an emotional sap, so 66 years old, you start becoming an emotional sap.
What have you to look forward to?
Yes. You all have got to look forward to, everybody in this room, if you're not 66 yet.
Mr. President, I'll give you a moment to rest a minute, but please, publicly, I choked, I should have choked up on my wife, too. I love my wife dearly, it's very important to me, and thank you again for helping us, because that may, as a parent or a grandparent, that may save a life, too, so thank you for that demonstration, because again, it happens just like that, and I hadn't seen a videotape on how to do it for years, I thought I knew how to do it. Well, I didn't stand her up, and I was desperately tired, and it wasn't working. So thank goodness I had a nurse who was a lot prettier than you, too, chief.
Okay, any council reports from boards, commissions, or committees? A.C., none, Greg, you're up, and Jeff, he's doing his city manager report right now.
I'll make it fast.
Unlike what the citizen may want, because it is on the agenda in this spot. So Greg, you're up.
Rick, is it up near the top of my screen?
Well, I don't remember seeing the report. I saw the two.
Oh. Five, three.
Is it the one at the bottom, that looks like the right color? I know it was.
Nope. I'm living up to my bad reputation.
Rick, has you got it okay over there? You're an assistant, if you need assistance, right?
Check, just check your stick drive, Steve. Sorry, I didn't reverse it. Sorry about that.
I'll.
Oh, boy.
It's not in the budget, but.
On two?
Okay. By the way, that replacement mic is not in the budget, just to.
Everybody's having mic troubles tonight, but at least you guys weren't destroying yours. Real briefly here, I don't remember, 10. Street reconstruction projects. Things are going along very well on 24th Street. I got an update late this afternoon from Mr. McDonald. All laterals, both water and sanitary sewer should be completed by the end of today. They are starting on storm sewer and storm laterals tomorrow. Remember, storm sewers, like the last to go in, because it's the shallowest of the utilities. All of the lead laterals in the neighborhood have been replaced. Grading work is estimated to begin on or about June 17, and we would expect to see that project under pavement in the month of July, which sure beats, you know, fighting snow at the tail end of the season. Contractor got in right away, got an early start. There was an issue last week that slowed things down with finding an underground fuel oil storage tank in the right-of-way. That's not unheard of in old neighborhoods. People used to have tanks, and they'd get buried under the sidewalk, or maybe partway under the street if the street got widened along the way. So that one is coming along pretty well. Contractor mobilized about two weeks ago on the 25th and Madison project. All but about seven properties out of 50 or so there have been inspected and provided with estimates on lead service lateral replacement and sanitary lateral replacement, if that's needed for their property. Working on follow-up contacts with those seven. They started at the low end of the project, if you will, on Water Main at West River and Hayes Street, and they want to complete both water and sanitary in that lower area, excuse me, before heading uphill toward Forest Avenue. So that's the status of that project, which got a more recent start with advanced construction. the status of that project, which got a more recent start with advanced construction. Crack sealing program. We wrapped up the spring's crack sealing program with about 1,000 hours crack filling on 11 different streets as well as parking lot sealing at the, crack sealing at the library community house in City Hall. It's not one of the more maybe sexy things that city government does. We don't do many sexy things. But crack sealing does prevent water seepage, prevents freeze thaw in the winter, which really wreaks havoc with concrete streets. So it's good maintenance 101 and nice job by the public works crews. Ross can come up and tell you a little bit about unidirectional flushing in the water distribution system, which we're embarking on shortly. And I know Ross would like to share that.
I would like to share. So what we're going to be doing in the future here, it's going to take us several months to accomplish what we're getting after. What we're going to do is we're going to isolate a lot of our areas in town. We're going to take certain blocks. We went through with Town and Country, Greg Dressler, and how to get a simplified version of flushing the water from point A to B, but in an organized, computerized fashion. So it's going to take us several months to get this. We're going to go close valves. We are going to have the potential for dirty water, things like that. We will try to do everything we can to flush it out. We're going to work in the morning so that we have time to take care of the customers and things like that. But again, it's going to be a long process, but it's part of our lead control system that we're working on so that we can continue to lower those lead levels in the city, try to save as much money as we can on lead, keep our customers healthy and happy. But it will be a drawn-out process and I'm sure you guys might be getting some correspondence with that if you do in the future. At least you get a background on what we're doing and we can take care of it. We have people on call 24 hours a day to take care of it. We want to make sure we take care of our community. That's our number one goal. So, but it is part of the process to save money, make things more efficient, and get that lead cause or issue out of our system. So, does anybody got any questions? Yes?
With that, it is a good system, good procedure, be proactive, take care of this. But I wonder if we could alert the neighborhoods that, because if there will be some extra perhaps debris or discoloration of the water, maybe we encourage them to run it a little longer than normal before they use anything. So we could be proactive that way?
It's going to be a little too difficult only because we have emergencies come up with contractors, things like that. We're trying to, we got meter changes, we got a bunch of things. I'm trying to squeeze it all in there and that's why I wanted to make it a more organized fashion, but I think we'll have a pretty good grip on it. We have, we have enough staff after if something would go wrong. But I think we can take care. I don't think we're going to have as much discoloration or disturbances in our pipes as we think. So once we get into it, if it would get to the point where we think it would cause a lot of issues, we'll then regroup and figure out how we can do it. It's not, it's not as fast as we can get this done. It's just a way to do it correctly. So, so we're going to see the first couple of, I'll give you guys an update on that so we make sure everybody's informed on what's happening.
And this work is to start?
No, we're going to start today, but it's obviously going to be this week we're going to potentially start. So we have several different areas that we're going to be working on. So I would like to narrow it down. I would love to call everybody personally and tell them, but unfortunately it's just not going to work the way after we sat down and met with everything, how we can, when, how and when we can get it all done. So, because we have to flow at different velocities and things like that. So it's, and it could, one hydrant could take four hours of flushing. We don't know. So that's why we can't really say how long and where we're going to be. But our number is in the book. You can call us. We'll respond. We'll take care of it. We'll help anybody any way we can.
Generally, are you starting north side, east side, south?
No, we're going to start on the east side and work our way. So.
Okay. So at least.
Yeah. What I could do too is we could hold off until the following meeting if we need to. That way we can.
I mean, we can at least generally say.
If you guys are good with that, we could.
If it's east of the East Twin River and your water on 45th Street is cloudy, it's probably not due to the unidirectional flushing. We can.
My solution is let it rip.
Yeah. Within general areas, we could get something out on Facebook.
Yeah, we'll do the Facebook. There you go. We'll do that. That'll work. That way we can get some kind of updates and keep everybody as best we can in the know. So. Any more questions?
Bonnie?
How many hydrants do you have?
674.
Oof.
You want a part-time job?
We'll see.
We're not going to flush them all, but we're going to do different areas and dead ends and things like that. So it's quite an organized process. So.
Speaking of hydrants, a citizen did send me an email last week. If I can just jump in. There is a hydrant that has been bagged for quite a while on Riverview Drive in the low spot between the Tannery Bridge and, I'm sorry, on double V, between the Tannery Bridge and Riverview. That's been bagged for a long time, ever since the high water levels. No, it's not Buckley's Body Bag, as the gentleman suggested in his email. Well, I thought that was kind of catchy. But it was bagged because of the proximity to very high surface water that, and it's bagged basically, A, it's valved off.
Correct.
The valve is turned off and it's bagged. So the fire department are, because it's at the edge of town or even some of the volunteer departments know full well not to use it. Makes it really impossible for any negative pressure to be created, which when you're in an area that's inundated with water would be a really bad thing. So the water department, I've not responded to that email from Friday yet, but the water department is mindful of that, as is the fire department, and that hydrant is bagged for a legitimate reason.
100% correct. We do that just for information to these guys. As time is very critical for their jobs. So, and anytime we had a situation in that lower area, we figured we're better off just isolate that fire hydrant off. So, and it's, there's a resilient wedge gate valve locking that system off. So there's nothing can go wrong with that. So we figured we'd be out the hydrant and still safe. So.
Thank you. That one just popped into my head, but it was a citizen's concern.
You have questions, Jeff? Jeff's got a question.
Generally flush them for?
This project, I don't know yet. I didn't ever unidirectionally flush yet in my career. So this is the first time. So it could be, it could be lengthy, only because we have to get at certain velocities. So what we need to do is move that water through that pipe at a calculated flow rate for X amount a minute. So, and then if we had get disturbances, then we have to rush flush it even longer. So I'll give you an update on it. I promise. I never did it before. So it's all new stuff to me. I've been in the water industry.
The only reason I'm asking is before I was on council, somebody had their water hydrant was running like overnight.
We would do that one on the dead end of your house, I think is what, are you thinking? That the fire hydrants are running back there?
No, not by my house. This was somewhere else in town.
Shouldn't be running overnight. If you see that ever in the future, let us know.
Right.
We know how to shut them off.
Fine. Any progress.
It's water, just call. We'll steer you down the right path and help you out. So you get information. So. Any more questions?
Thank you, Russ.
All right.
Look forward to the updates. Just a shout out to the Main Street Program, which with funding assistance from the West Foundation, has been able this summer to place hanging planters at downtown intersections. City personnel did assist, as in the photo there with the placement of the planters. Those, a lot of questions on Facebook. Those are so-called self-watering planters. They each have a four-gallon water reservoir, some material that wicks up the water to the area around the root zone, and those are being filled weekly by Main Street Program volunteers. And I know the volunteer with barrels of water on the back of his truck and a pump and all that good stuff was out this weekend filling those reservoirs up in the hot weather. So kudos to Main Street and thank you to the West Foundation for helping. I'll build on that. Also, we had a couple of citizens step up and I know they're working with Terry and Parks and Rec. They bought, I think, 16 more hanging plants for around the band shell that are being installed. And again, they'll be watered by the same folks who are watering the other planters. So when we're looking at the bands performing and stuff, it'll have a nice look as well all summer long. So those were donated by a couple of citizens. But just to expand on that, we're making sure that we have, or beautify our city.
If this goes well and they thrive, I'm certainly going to advocate to Main Street that they seek out the funding to extend them up to the 22nd Street intersection and down to the Washington Street Bridge. So you got each of the gateways covered. In the personnel area, you met a couple of new full-time employees tonight. Police officer applications closed today for patrol officer positions. And the Parks and Rec Department would like to get the word out, and you're hearing this all over the state and all over the country, we need seasonal help in Parks and Rec. Some of the positions that do not involve operation of power equipment can be as young as age 14, others require age 16 plus. But there's lots of opportunities. We need help for seasonal maintenance in the cemeteries, building attendance, pretty much any, any of the areas where we rely very heavily on seasonal help. So, thank you. Whoa, what did I just do? Is that what it's all for? Okay. Would remind council members that the dedication of the State of Wisconsin Historic Marker, which commemorates the dedication after World War I as what is now State Highway 42 between TR and Manitowoc as American Legion Memorial Drive, will be this coming Saturday, the 12th, at noon at the Spirit of the Rivers Way Side. And this beautiful planter constructed around the historic plaque was the work of Lee Hansen from Seeds and Beans, local veteran, and his son. Lee's an active member at the Legion Post. So I know our local veterans groups would appreciate council's attendance at that event. We all talk about it as Memorial Drive. It kind of rolls off the tongue. Not, I think most of us weren't aware of the history. And this is an official State of Wisconsin Historic Marker, which will get announced with signs half a mile in advance of the wayside coming from either direction. As soon as the state can put those up, we were in touch with them a couple of months ago on that. So noon, Saturday. Also related to remembering, especially remembering those who gave their all in defense of our country. Thank you to everyone that participated in the reading of the honor roll and the bell ceremony down here in Central Park, as well as the rifle volley, which was repeated at the old cemetery and the new cemetery. So Two Rivers remembers and I expect we'll see parade and full regular Memorial Day activities next year. New playground equipment at Neshota Park being enjoyed. If you were by there this weekend, kids were climbing all over and enjoying it. We did suffer a little vandalism to one piece, which is going to be rectified very quickly. And we'll, the area will be under the observation of video cameras henceforth. So we don't have that problem. But some really beautiful equipment, a lot of positive feedback from the community.
We're on that. Is there timing for the other, I think we approved the other piece of apparatus that maybe Terry could update us on?
By the way, I should point out, even, and this isn't a gratuitous plug, since he is the son of our council president, but Ben Andrews in the audience is intern this summer in the Parks and Rec Department. So the young man that you see back there with Terry is helping out this summer and learning a lot in the process, we expect.
Will be hope.
His major is Park and Rec at University of Whitewater. So he's falling in to do an internship here. Thank you, Ben.
Yes. As far as the zip line goes, the tentative delivery date is next week, between the 15th and 18th. Every time I talk to him, it gets a day later and a day later and a day later. So that's a tentative date that we're looking at and they are hoping, I'm crossing my fingers and pushing really hard, that it'll be installed by the 4th of July.
Oh, that'd be great.
So they're, the crew is out there digging Riverside this week because Riverside will be installed the same time the zip line, how we got the discount for the installation. So you'll be seeing Riverside being dug out for that equipment as well.
And is the zip line going to be adjacent to the new equipment that's going to be in the Shota Park?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks.
Terry, did you want to?
We received an email this weekend. I don't know if you want to go back aside and I can.
Sure.
This piece here, the xylophone, it has a little book of music that you can play in the middle of it. It's just one solid piece and it was ripped out. So I emailed Game Time right when I got the email and I actually went down there right away and looked at it just because I was worried it was something really major.
I think I described it as something bigger than it was, but still, just utter disrespect for brand new.
We're working on getting it replaced.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Okay. Jeez. We would remind people that tomorrow, if you've got electronic junk in your basement or garage you want to get rid of, tomorrow, 8, excuse me, 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. down at Water and Light, Lake Street by McDonald's is recycle day. And they'll be happy to help you get it out of your car. There are fees for disposal of most of the materials and you can find those on the trwaterandlight.com website. Tomorrow, 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Upcoming events, we would just remind folks that Sunday, Thursday is Thursday, June 24 with fun and games and inflatables and 25 cent ice cream Sundays concert by the Two Rivers Community Band. We're post-COVID now. The band is back. And so look forward to getting out for Sunday, Thursday. That leads us into one of the big weekends of summer as we welcome back Beach Bash to Neshota Beach, June 25th and 26th. The Cool City Classic Car Show is also that weekend. The Cruise into downtown on the 25th, Car Show day-long up and down Washington Street on the 26th. And the Senior Center again this year is including a Pancake Breakfast fundraiser. We know the Car Show participants love that. The community's welcome to come out as well. That's 7:30 to 10:30 at the Community House. And I don't know if Mr. Wuhuski might have any other details on Beach Bash. It's all for a good cause. If anything you wanted to share, Adam?
Yeah. I mean, we're welcoming in Head East. So those of you from the late 70s and into the 80s will recognize that band from the radio. So that's an exciting one for Friday, June 25th. Yeah, and bands all weekend long, fun carnival rides, whole nine yards.
Good stuff. Good stuff.
Bringing it back and thanks for Head East.
Yeah.
Heading up the headline.
Yep.
Is there enough heads I can say on that?
Uh, you might be able to add one, but that's good.
Kickoff. Legislative intergovernmental update, just a couple of things. There was another meeting this afternoon with Council President Andrews, myself, and City Attorney Jack Bruce, along with Mayor Nichols, the Manitowoc Council President and City Attorney on the Tourism Services Agreement between the two cities and the Visitor Convention Bureau. There are meetings this week. I know of the Visitor Convention Bureau's Executive Committee and full board meets on Thursday. We're meeting again with Manitowoc reps in early July with a goal of fashioning a new Tourism Services Agreement that can be acted upon by the cities not later than, excuse me, September 1. So stay tuned on that one. Also, there'll be an update provided in closed session to the city's Room Tax Commission on Thursday of this week. Room Tax Commission meets Thursday at 10 a.m. here in this room.
Greg, I just want to add too, the general visitor board, which I'm representative for City Tours, meets on the Thursday this week at 8 o'clock.
8 o'clock.
At the Farm Center too. So.
Okay.
Be interesting meeting. I'll update everyone at the Room Tax.
You'll be here fresh from that meeting as you're on our Room Tax Commission as well. Thank you. Thank you. Again, Room Tax Commission for the city is Mr. Bittner, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Leclerc, Jim Van Lannan Jr. from the Lighthouse Inn, and myself as city manager. The other thing I just wanted to mention with the intergovernmental update, there was an email that came out last Friday from the State Department of Revenue advising that the online form for non-entitlement cities like Two Rivers, generally cities under 50,000, to request the first installment of the local rescue recovery funds under the so-called American Rescue Plan. That'll be available. Two Rivers allocation is currently estimated, and they keep saying estimate, but at $1,155,645.50 some cents, 52, I think that should have been. Half of the amount can be drawn down in 2021. The other half will be available in 2022. You got to spend the money by the end of 2024. And we'll be having discussion at a future council member meeting as to the council preference on how that money gets spent. I've got the wrong date on here, don't I? The, this was from last year, apparently. Celebrate Two Rivers will be on Saturday, August 28 at Walshfield. Sorry, that was pointed out to me late today by the city clerk. And you know what? If you want the real scoop on events in Two Rivers, don't listen to the city manager's report. Go to exploretworivers.com. Up-to-date, comprehensive listing of community events. So good that we even heard kudos from the Manitowoc city reps today saying it's a wicked good, or words to that effect, website. That's my report.
Greg, I have a question from legislative standpoint. I've been reading, and Bonnie mentioned this last meeting, there's been a lot of discussion about immunity for public employees, particularly the police department. Have you heard anything in changing or pending regarding that? And Chief, help me with this. The coverage, I'm not seeing the right.
Qualified.
Qualified.
Well, qualified immunity.
Yes. Is there any updates on any pending activity on that?
Guys, have you heard anything?
And again, that's some of the protection afforded under law to folks that choose to dedicate their lives to public service and the police and fire profession. Some, there's been some questioning of that with some of the concerns at the federal level especially, but it's cropping up in state legislatures.
Because I read an article in the Madison newspaper about the pros and cons and they were more con than pro.
Yeah. I'm not aware of any active legislative efforts. I'd be, I'd be very surprised given.
Because I've been trying to follow this. I just want to explain that that immunity means if somebody wants to go after a cop over and over and over for the same thing till they eventually can get even his pension and things like that. But as far as I know, they haven't voted on it yet at the state level. I don't even know when they're going to have a hearing. I saw it in the, the government updates that we always get, but it didn't have a, I can't remember a clear date about voting. I don't even think they had a hearing on it yet.
But certainly something worth watching.
Right. And I'd suggest if Chief Comer, maybe if he sees something pending, he alerts us.
I expect.
Because I'd like to take a position at city council or how we feel about that and learn a little bit more. But I think it is a good resource to have available for our public officials, particularly the police department.
Okay. Any other, Greg, thank you. Anything else? Yeah. All right. We'll go to the number 11, the Cessent Agenda, Presentation of Minutes. We've got the city council regular meeting, May 17, 2021, a work session meeting, minutes from May 24, 2021, motion to waive those reading and adopt the minutes. And B, an application petition. We have an application for a temporary Class B license for the Two River Main Street Cool City Classic Car Show and Cruise, June 25th and 26th, from Washington Street, from 15. City Classic Car Show and Cruise, June 25th and 26th, from Washington Street, from 15th Street to 22nd Street, and Central Parks East and West. Greg, do you want to mention anything about that, the parameters or the location of that?
Thank you. The, for the Car, Cruise and Show, the intent is, the intent of the request is that, again, open containers of beer would be allowed within the area of the show, within the barricades for the street closure. Now, I have talked with Mr. Rusev on Saturday, the street closure goes up to and includes the 2100 block of Washington in front of Quick Trip, that if that is approved by council, we would want additional barricades and signage on the east side of the street. You think about downtown, most of the street is contained by buildings, but you get to the far north end of the street in particular by Quick Trip, that whole block is open and we, I think, want to deter people from, if street closure needs to go that far north, and that you don't know until the day of the show and how many cars show up, that there be additional signage there, not just at 22nd Street, but along the curb face.
So do we need to add that into the application that's in front of us right now, or do we take that separately? How do we want to handle that? Because the application states 15 to 22nd with none of the provisions you just talked about.
If council wishes to add that to the motion or deal with that separately, either way is fine.
Okay.
Just some clarification, that was quite a topic of controversy, I recall, last year because, isn't it approved for Friday night regularly, but it's not approved for Saturday? And there was question.
I did talk to Assistant Chief Minor about that, I think they're in the third or fourth year of this, at this point.
Is it both Friday night and all day Saturday?
Request is Friday and Saturday.
And they can have open containers? Because I thought we, last year, or when we discussed it previously, we didn't want Saturday to be open containers throughout the entire downtown area. Has that changed now or?
Can I make a recommendation, because this is a consent agenda? Can we pull this from, can I make a motion or get a motion to pull this from the consent agenda and we deal with this separately tonight? And if we have to do the addition as far as the extra barricade or anything else, or shorten the length of it, because we've got to get on with the rest of this. Can I get a motion to move this to a topic, to a separate topic out of the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Greg, we're going to move that and we'll talk about that in separately. It's on tonight's agenda, that's okay, Jack, right, to move it? Thank you. So we'll move it into there. So let's move to number C, which is a report on minutes of meetings. We got seven of them, motion to receive and place those on file. We have a summary of verified bills for the month of May 2021 of $2,061,524.52. Motion to receive and place that on file. We have moved to number three, we have financial reports from four different departments, motion to receive and place that on file. And I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the change we just made, moving the Class B license application out with various actions recommended. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda on the variation of removing the Car Show and.
Very Class B license out.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
With various.
Thank you, Jay. Andy, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, motion carries. We've got quite a bit of formal items, lot of resolutions, lot of ordinances tonight. Jamie's going to be doing a lot of roll calling. So get ready here. Here we go, number 12. A is a resolution upon retirement for Officer Scott Hodek. Did I say that right? H-O-D-E-K, Hodek, thank you. Completing a 15-year career in law enforcement, motion to read and adopt that resolution. Is that something that the chief is going to address?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion?
Make a motion to read and adopt the resolution.
Thank you, do I have a second? Thank you, Bonnie, any discussion?
One question, while it was taken off the consent calendar, at what point were you looking to go back to the Car, Cruise, Car Show?
We could put it in a formal item if you want to put it under.
Typically, I'm sorry, that typically would just follow the consent, voting on the overall consent agenda. I just didn't want to lose track of it, if you wanted.
Don't lose track of it, so.
If you wanted it at the tail end.
P-Q-R, we'll put it in R under the council formal items, if you don't mind.
Whatever you guys say, I just wanted to make sure we weren't losing track of it.
We won't, we won't lose track of it.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, so Chief, we have a motion and a second. You want to, well, let's go, any discussion? I'd rather wait till I hear the resolution from you before we have any discussion than roll call, okay, is that all right?
Yeah.
Thank you, if you don't mind reading that.
Resolution upon retirement, whereas Scott Hodek joined the ranks of the Two Rivers Police Department on October 24, 2006, as a police officer, and whereas, on January 21, 2012, Officer Scott Hodek received a life-saving award for his efforts saving the life of a Two Rivers resident, and whereas, Scott initially served six years as a patrol officer with the Police Department, where he then served the community of Manitowoc as a patrol officer for another five years before returning to the Two Rivers Police Department, and whereas, July 5, 2017, Officer Scott Hodek was rehired as a patrol lieutenant. And whereas, Lieutenant Hodek served the city of Two Rivers with dedication and distinction for a total of nine years and the law enforcement profession for a total of 15 years. And whereas, Scott retired May 26, 2021, after completing a 15-year career in law enforcement. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Two Rivers hereby expresses its gratitude and appreciation for Scott Hodek and his contributions to the Two Rivers Police Department and the community of Two Rivers, and be it further resolved that the city of Two Rivers extends its best wishes to Scott for a long, healthy and happy retirement, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Lieutenant Scott Hodek in token of the city's thanks for his many years of dedicated service to the citizens of Two Rivers dated the 7th day of June 2021.
Thank you for reading that. Any questions for the chief or discussion from council? Well, congratulations, Mr. Scott Hodek, and let's do a roll call vote, Jamie.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky. Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, congratulations, Scott, if you're out there listening. Again, thanks for your 15 years. Resolution upon retirement wastewater treatment mechanic facility, Phil Dassie? Did I get that one right?
Yes, yeah, Dave Kasebeer here can read that once it's served up.
Thank you, so a motion to read and adopt that resolution. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Adam, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jeff. Let's go ahead and let, let's go ahead and hear this one, and we'll go ahead and do a roll call again.
Resolution upon retirement, whereas Philip Dassie began his employment with the city of Two Rivers wastewater treatment facility on June 24, 2008, as a wastewater mechanic worker, and whereas Mr. Dassie retired March 23, 2021, completing a distinguished career with the city of Two Rivers wastewater treatment facility in service to our community, and whereas, Mr. Dassie was instrumental in the development and management of a comprehensive preventive maintenance program. The establishment of this program assured facility equipment maintained peak operating performance and greatly increased its equipment longevity. And whereas, Mr. Dassie always exhibited a willingness to assist his fellow workers during emergency situations or when his professional experience was needed to resolve treatment problems or diagnose mechanical failures. Now, therefore, be resolved that the city of Two River, that the city council of the city of Two Rivers does hereby express its appreciation to Philip Dassie for his distinguished service to wastewater treatment facility, its customers, the city of Two Rivers, for the past 13 years. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be provided to Philip Dassie with congratulations and best wishes for happy retirement, dated the 7th day of June 2021.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or any discussion on this item? Seeing none, congratulations, Mr. Dassie. Jamie, would you like to do a roll call, please?
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Yes.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Again, thank you for your 13 years, appreciate that, and.
On to number C, resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of up to $947,076 a water systems revenue bond, Series 2021, and providing for other details and covenances, and with respect there to, an approval of related $1,352,967 financial assistance agreement. I know that's a lot to take in. Greg, I would like you to summarize and give us a little bit of detail on that.
This is related to borrowing and so-called principal forgiveness assistance from the state Safe Drinking Water Loan Program for this year's water projects, which would include the new water mains and laterals under 24th, 25th and Madison Streets, where we're doing the projects, and the replacement of lead service laterals at other scattered locations around the city. I think we applied for and were approved for 18 of those locations. By approval of this resolution tonight, the council would be both approving the borrowing and entering into a, let's get, into a financial assistance agreement. I'm looking for the formal term. Yeah, financial assistance agreement with the state. So basically, the city's borrowing 947,076 at just under 1.5% annual interest for 20 years. We are getting 30% principal forgiveness on the project, which explains the difference between the.
747.
The million three.
Yeah, the million three.
So about $400,000 roughly, he had assistance?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and these, this borrowing would close yet this month. It's on a fairly tight timeframe. We'll be coming to you later in the summer with a similar resolution authorizing bond sale and agreement for the sewer side of things, so-called clean water borrowing.
This is consistent as in the budget too?
This is consistent with budget as well.
So I want a motion to waive the reading and adopt the resolution. We'll get into any discussion then in a minute. So do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Bonnie, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mark, any other questions or discussion?
That, that closing is June 23, by the way, and the interest rate, to be exact, is 1.485% for a 20-year term.
Was this this discussion we had last meeting where we had Baird come back with what the new rate was on the borrowing?
No, actually, that was for our general obligation tax-supported borrowing. In fact, that issue closed today, and the funds were wire, were wire transferred to the city.
Okay, so this is additional borrowing?
This is borrowing specific to the water utility.
But this was in the budget, correct?
Correct. Yep, with a water utility revenue pledge, this is not general obligation borrowing.
Any other questions for?
And all the documents have been prepared and reviewed by Quarles and Brady, who we use for bond counsel, so.
Other questions? Seeing none, it is a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale. I'm looking for a roll call, Jamie.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Moving on to D, resolution recognizing Thursday, June 24, 2021, is Sunday, Thursday. Looking for a motion to read and adopt the resolution. Is someone going to read the resolution or we're just going to look at it and adopt it as it is?
That's your call.
Okay, we can do that. Motion to read and adopt it.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Adam, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. I have Jeff and Jay tied, put that down as a tiebreaker, Jamie. And any discussion? The resolution is in front of you, I believe it's on.
197.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
All right, so we're looking to just go ahead and move on, no other discussion? Roll call, because it is a resolution, Jamie.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. E is a notice of claim by Eric J. Walda regarding injuries and damages sustained as a result of a slip and fall incident on June 16, 2018, at the wayside of Memorial Drive opposite Woodland Drive. The motion is going to be to deny and disallow the claim as recommended by the city's insurance carrier with the finding that the city was not negligent in this manner, it did not own nor maintain the wayside at the time of the accident. If you recall, we took that wayside.
We took title after that. The city took title to it in January of 2020. You'll note from the notice of claim that was included along with this resolution, the injuries that the gentleman cites were incurred in June of 2018. I believe we had previously advised a representative of the claimant of that, but we did get the notice of claim, sent it to the insurance company. This action by the city council limits the claim period, the period where a claim could be taken to court. Help me out there, if you can.
Provided written notice is, is sent to the claimant, consistent with the statute.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to deny and disallow the claim. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny and disallow the claim.
Thank you, Jay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Tracy, second. And any other discussion regarding this? It's pretty hard to be filing a claim, it's property we don't own, but. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of denying and disallowing this claim? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Move on to F, Compliance Maintenance Resolution for Wastewater Treatment Plant. Looking for, again, a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution as recommended by Public Utilities Committee. Does someone want to address that from the Public Utilities?
Actually, again, I'd like to invite Dave Kasebeer up to the mic. This is the annual self-reported report card, if you will, for the performance of the wastewater plant, so. Oh, and the mic, please.
This year, we scored a little bit better than last year. This is just a report how the state assesses us every year.
Pull the mic a little closer to you, thank you. It's hard with the mask, too, I know.
It's a report on how the state assesses the operations at the plant every year. They break it down into a point system, out of 148 possible points, we scored 136. We were perfect in every category we were assessed on, with the exception of our influent, which is something we don't have any control over.
Dave, you might, I asked Jim about that, you might explain that a little bit, the influence compound of the.
The, our, the last two years, our flows were very high. Our flows have come down, but our loading has stayed high as far as pounds of BOD. That's, that's how they assess the strike to the waste stream. We're rated for 4,096 pounds. We've been over it a few months, we've been right at that, that 4,000-pound mark pretty much most of the year, and that's what threw us over in that category.
And the influence is something that we really can't control.
No, we can't.
But you've done a stellar job in.
They weight these categories and they weight the influent lull, but everything we put out from the system scored well.
Right. And the influence is based on the contamination that we make it that's even outside of the city too, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But that comes to us, by the way, of the collection system.
It comes, by the way.
Not stormwater, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
And quite honestly, that's an ongoing effort to try to pinpoint any sources for high BOD.
Yeah, we've been looking back further and further into the collection system. We started last year. We'll continue again this year. It's a slow process. Before we can go knocking on doors, I'd really like a good idea that this is where it's coming from. And our loading is sporadic. It's not every day. It may be a Wednesday one week and a Thursday the next. But it's enough to throw us over for the month.
So I need a motion. I took it out of order here. Motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution. And then a second, and then we'll talk about any other discussion we have. Thank you for sharing that information with us. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. Any other discussion or questions regarding the maintenance resolution for the wastewater treatment plant? Okay, seeing none. Jamie, you are doing a roll call, please.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Thank you for sharing the scorecard. By the way, how does that stack up with some other local municipalities close by?
There's a lot of places that would like that score.
Okay, so what he said was there are a lot of places that would like that score that two rivers got, citizens, so be proud. Our wastewater is in good hands. All right, let's move on to G, award of bid Pine Tree Lift Station replacement, replacement of control panel at the Columbus Street Lift Station. So because it's, again, a word of a bid that's in our packages, and I'm trying to get to that because I'm looking at all of your wonderful scores here, it is on page 233, and it's an email on Public Works from Jim McDonald to Mr. Buckley. I'm looking for a motion to award the bid to advance construction at its low bid of $305,086. Looking for a motion, a second, and then we'll get into discussion.
I'll...
Okay, thank you, Jay.
I'll second.
I got Bonnie second. And any discussion on this? We got Mr. McDonald here. If there's any questions for him?
This is, again, a budgeted project. The financing approved and reflected in the budget would be a safe drink, excuse me, a clean water fund borrowing that will be coming to council within the next two months. The overall project, and I'm sorry, this spreadsheet has got very, the last page, has got very small letters, but if you award this contract at the low bid amount of $305,086, and you add into that the engineering costs and other miscellaneous costs, the total project is, gosh, that's bad, like 398,840, is that the number I'm seeing there? 70% of that ultimately will be a borrowing through the Clean Water Fund, and 30% will be, again, principal forgiveness, as we've qualified for principal forgiveness on all of our projects that are being funded through the Clean Water Fund this year. So yeah, total, I'm still having a hard time with that, total project costs $359,840. So the city would be borrowing for 70% of that and getting principal forgiveness from the Clean Water Fund for 30%.
The difference is not the $305,000 that we would actually be paying advanced construction. It's the differences in the engineering costs.
Engineering costs, other costs related to the project.
And on package, package page number 238, just for those referencing it, is where the stormwater pond will collect from?
Oh, I'm sorry. This, this one is first the Pine Tree Lift Station.
Oh, lift station.
They're both, they're both Clean Water Fund assisted projects, but first one is... And if you want to know the why and what for on the lift station replacement, I'll defer to Mr. McDonald or Mr. Kasebeer.
Dave is the guy who's been on...
Dave, Dave with the mic.
Yep. Thank you.
The lift station, it's an old, they call them silo-type lift stations. It's a steel cylinder that goes down into the ground. I believe this one was put in in 1968. We have definitely got its life out of it. It's flooding inside now. My guys go down into it. It's a confined space entry. They pump it down almost three times a week to pump the water out. It's not a matter of when it's going to fail. It's definitely going to fail.
Is this one that's in a private party's front yard, too?
It's, yeah, it's not in an ideal location. It's right in a property owner's front yard. We would still be leaving the station there, the wet well, but moving all the electrical controls over.
Across the street in the public right-of-way?
Yes.
Mark, question?
The result is 359,840. What do you remember? I don't remember, budgeted in the budget. Do you remember? How does that compare to the budget cost?
I think that's a half a million.
The budget was half a million, so we're spending eight...
I'm pretty confident I'm going by memory, Mark, but yes.
Okay, so we're, so all, it's covered by the current budget.
You're saying we're under budget, is what you're saying?
We're under budget, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And this has been discussed several times at Public Utilities Committee over the past year or more.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, we have discussion. Any other discussion before we do a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. It passes. Let's move to H, award of bid of the contract for the 20th Street Eggers Pond. That's what I was referring to when I held up that piece of paper, on its low bid of $677,270.54. It's hard for me to say low bid and say $677,000, but it is the low bid. It's not the low amount, but it's a low bid for this project. So that's what's page 233 in front of you. McMahon is the bidder, is that correct?
Oh, they are the designer consultant.
Designer consultant, thank you. And that's laid out on page 234 of our deck.
There were three bids received, you'll note, and there was quite a range. The three bids are shown on packet page 237. The low bidder, recommended for approval, is Superior Sewer and Water out of Luxembourg.
And Vinton and Advance were the other two, so...
All good contractors.
Yeah, that's substantially lower, 677. The high bid was $1,031.
Yes.
Okay.
And again, this project has, as you see in Mr. McDonald's memo, excuse me, again, this one will qualify for 30% principal forgiveness. All of our, you can get, the community can qualify for 30% principal forgiveness, but the maximum amount you can get from the Clean Water Fund, help me, Jim, 750,000?
750,000.
Yep, so we were kind of sweating it to see how these last two bids came in for the Pine Tree Lift Station and the Eggers Pond. That's in addition to the already awarded contracts for the sanitary sewer component on the street projects, which are also being funded through this program. But bids came in low enough, so we get the 30% principal forgiveness on each. This project also benefits from an urban non-point grant of $154,600, assuming we can apply all of that grant.
That's in addition to the 677, or is that, is that a net from that?
That comes off, and then the 30% gets applied to the net.
Yes, you subtract the PNS grant from the bid amount, and then again, take 30% off the balance.
So I want to make sure I do the math. I'm hearing the math correctly. 677 minus 150, that's 30% off whatever that net number is.
Correct.
Right? Okay, so it's not going to, okay, perfect. Thank you.
And again, and Kurt had mentioned this earlier, but the last page relative to this one in yellow is the, the flow area or the...
Drainage basin.
Thank you.
It's a drainage basin for the pond area.
And while we're not going out digging holes for ponds right and left these days, as you, as you well know, one of the reasons that the Public Works Committee has remained supportive of this project, and I, they met last week, this, this comes with their recommendation for approval, Jim? That is correct. Is frankly, it does help some with cleaning up the East Twin watershed as far as suspended solids and other contaminants, but it also is beneficial because it's an area of the community where we hope to see a fair amount of redevelopment activity. It's most of the property west of the East Twin River, over to Jefferson, in some cases, all the way over to Washington Street.
Yes, we've actually extended sewers a little bit within this project in order to cover that portion of the intersection near 22nd and Washington.
So basically, if you're doing redevelopment in this area and need to address 40% suspended solids removal, this pond can take care of it for those developments. They don't need to be taking up real estate with storm scepters or small stormwater ponds or other facilities.
And this is where the old Eggers East property is that we acquired, correct?
Correct, and it consumes, we don't have the concept map, but it consumes about the northerly third of the property.
Mark, question?
An interesting piece for the public awareness, too. The city council decided that this pond was critical in the future. Remember, we made a gesture of motion not to pursue any additional stormwater ponds until the state had really ratcheted down their requirements, but we knew that this was a critical component because of everything you've said, Greg, for future development in the city. It's in the heart of our city. It's amazing to think that, it's almost across the street from Walgreens, and there's no drainage or stormwater ponds covering the area.
It extends quite a distance, yeah. The, the city, we do hope to be able to use the balance of the site for development. It's a nice waterfront parcel. To the extent it could be marketed for that development, the intent would be to reimburse the stormwater utility for its prorata, for that prorata share of the purchase cost. Understand that urban non-point grant cannot help us with paying for the portion that's not going to be a stormwater pond. There will have to be a survey done and a property division done, so there'll be project site to the north, remainder parcel, if you will, to the south.
That's correct.
There is some slightly, I'll defer to Jim on what that means, but some slightly contaminated soil on the project that will be excavated. Our preference would be to get it off the site because that could enlarge the footprint of the possible development site. I think it moves the line maybe 25 feet to the north.
Yeah, about that, yes.
The project as bid anticipates taking those soils to the Miro Drive disposal site that is owned by the city, that was created primarily for dredge spoils. That cost is built into the contract, and Jim, that's about 20?
Yeah, yeah, if we kept it on-site, it would, you could reduce the bid amount by about 20 some odd thousand dollars.
Yep, but right now, we are pursuing permits as to both beneficial reuse of the soil on-site or taking it off-site, with the preference, we still need to get the final BNR approval. Hopefully, that can be had.
We're going to try and take it to the industrial park site and create a small green space with it. We have to cover it with something, so it'll work.
Otherwise, it becomes part of a berm, a larger berm than we would otherwise need to the south edge of the pond, gets you down to about the north edge of the 19th Street right-of-way as extended. If, if it leaves and goes to the woodland, the Miro Drive site, you gain about 25 feet to the north.
Mark, you got your hand up?
And just to reaffirm the community, too, our intent is, as I understand it, there's a sign on order...
There is a sign on order.
Promoting that as a potential property for sale. It's a beautiful riverfront location. The stormwater will be tractively designed. I mean, it should be a gain for our community.
In addition to the sign on order, there is digital marketing material that we've shared with several developers.
So now that McMahon's drawing the pond, that actually could be called out on the sign, too, so they would know, the developer knows where the placement's going to be?
There is, there's an illustration of the intent, and if somebody wants further details, our community development office can assist them with that.
Perfect. Jeff?
I get beat up about these ponds all the time, but this is one that I think is semi-okay with me, partially because of the contractor left 40 or 35% on the table of the bid, and the benefits down the road, you know, with potential, so...
And it doesn't hurt to get a little bit of a grant money, too, to help reduce that cost.
Right.
No, I'm sorry.
No, no.
We estimated that it would be $400,000 city's cost, and that's basically what it comes to. Because of the toxic problem, and we still came up with that, this is a pretty good deal. Bonnie, you are going to say something? I'm sorry.
I just want to make a comment about Riverview Pond. That was 77% paid for through grants and through forgiveness, and it was twice the size of this. It would have done twice the work that this one's going to do. This one is here, and we're doing it because it's pretty. That was one of the comments for why we were doing it. I'm not going to say too much more, but it's, I think it was foolish that we didn't do the Riverview one. No matter what you agree, even if our staff is wrong, then, you know, get them fired if they're not doing a good job. But they did recommend Riverview, and that would have been probably a wiser choice. And when you sell this property, I hope you tell these people who are going to buy it, we've already put a pond in for you, because we wouldn't have had to have done that, but they would have had to have done it. And so that, to me, should be a selling point.
It's a selling point. You got that right.
You're right. We should recoup some of those dollars, Bonnie. Absolutely correct. Any other questions while we got Jim on the podium? By the way, what Bonnie's alluding to is prior council didn't approve some of those things, so I'm not, I want to make sure it's a record that this council is a little different makeup. Okay, let's go to the, I'm looking for a motion to award the bid to Superior Sewer and Water Inc. for its low bid, again, of $677,270.54. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Tracy. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mark, any other discussion with or without Jim up there? Anybody has?
Again, I would just remind you, it's, I know it's repeating myself, but we will be back within, I would hope, two months at the, at the most, with the borrowing resolution authorizing, authorization for a financial assistance agreement with the state for the loan and principal forgiveness components on this project, the Pine Tree Lift Station, and the, just the sanitary under the streets, right, Jim?
Sanitary.
We don't get funding for storm sewers under the streets.
Correct.
Okay, that'll be coming back at you as the final piece on this.
I guess I have one more question. The, and I'm not sure of the adjacency, but those large stones that we did put along that shoreline, will they remain there with the pond coming? And will they, will they perhaps be relocated and another critical?
That's up in the air at this point in time. We can leave, we do plan on leaving those adjacent to the pond itself.
Okay.
But to the south of that, it's our discretion at this point.
It would depend in large measure, I think, is there developer interest there?
Right.
And do they, does a potential developer want the stones there or want them, want them gone?
Because it may be a barrier to the river access, but whatever the...
Right now, they are, because they're pretty tightly, I can tell you, the carp fishermen did not like them because it was hard to, hard to get your carp weighed, because you can only, you could only get in from the ends, but they...
I think some of us didn't even know the carp fishermen were here this year.
Right.
Because the Carp Fest wasn't really highly publicized.
Well, there was no Carp Fest, just a carp tournament.
Whatever it was.
It was not very highly publicized. There is some interest, I'm sorry, but there is some interest in bringing back the Carp Fest component.
Coming on, I saw a bunch of people on Facebook, but there's no, it wasn't on anyone's radar screen. Sorry, it wasn't.
Carp Fest got dropped by TRBA, Tours Business Association, a couple of years ago, and it was only through the efforts of private citizens that the tournament continued. And it's a cool event.
So Jamie, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a roll call on this, because we are looking at awarding a low bid of $677,000, and I want to make sure we have votes recorded.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
And pass the seven to one.
Thank you. Let's get this signed up and hopefully get this thing sold so we can get some money back as well. Aye. Ordinance to repeal, recreate municipal code sections nine dash six dash four C to entitle the responsibilities of owners, unquote, regarding the protection of external exterior wood surfaces. This provision was unintentionally listed incorrectly during the 2020 code codification process, so this is a cleanup as well, correct? Motion to waive the reading and adopt the ordinance with those changes, and the ordinance is in front of you on page number 239. Do you want to highlight any of the changes besides just what I read, Elizabeth? Before we vote?
I believe it was just listed incorrectly. I don't think there's actually changes to the ordinance content. It was just the way in the codification process, it was listed wrong, referred to wrong.
Okay.
So this is just really an order issue.
Thank you. That's all I needed. I think it's all we need, because again, we're looking at a lot of paper tonight, so a motion to waive the reading and adopt that ordinance. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Adam. Do I have a second?
I'll...
Thank you, Bill. Any other discussion regarding this? Mark?
A question with this ordinance change. Does that give us a tool to be a little more proactive in some buildings that need improvement in terms of...
It's, it's a tool that is in, has been in the code, has been used by the inspections department, and now... department, and now, after a little hiatus because of a mistake in the codification, can be used again. So I've seen any number of letters that have gone out from inspections that relate to, uh, the need for paint on exterior wood surfaces, and they do cite this section. I'm not saying there aren't more that could go out, but it has been used, it will be used.
And then offenders now that is in the ordinance can be fined because it's, it will help, will endorse.
Right, understanding sometimes municipal court is pretty easy on them and is, uh, understanding of delays, but yes. I can also tell you, I, we don't have details on it, but I know that Ms. Rungy and Mrs. Berg, who is a direct report to the community development director, uh, in inspections, are looking at other options for property maintenance codes that could be brought to the council for possible action. That's, that's very early, no, we, we aren't ready to do a staff report out on it, but as recently as last week, that discussion's going on.
There's also grant money that we're working on, CDA and BIDC, that we've allowed some ci, some citizens in certain sections to be able to leverage if they need to beautify or do the exterior improvements, that it's out there as well, correct?
Yeah, those targeted mailings are, are being prepared to go out.
So there are some things we're trying to do to help as well, and it's not just slap people on their hands because they don't have good-looking houses.
Sure.
It's what else can we be doing? All right, so any other discussion? Uh, because it is a ordinance appeal, I need a roll call on that, Jamie.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wuhuski.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
A move, thank you very much, Jamie. Moving to J, ordinance to amend municipal code sections one dash two dash one, entitled fees to amend the code sections for tower fees. The code sections were incorrectly listed during the 2020 code codification process, tabled from May 17th agenda. So that code change is also in front of you. Um, what has changed on there was just simply the date of the code section? Is that what was incorrect?
It was somehow misstated in the recodification.
This is 10 dash one dash 16 and 10 dash one dash 17.
Yeah, and understand, you're not amending the zoning code here because those reference sections are in, are Title 10, the zoning code. These actually lie in chapter, in section one, which is fees with reference to chapter 10.
So the fees didn't change, it's just the coding, just make sure the code's called out right?
Correct. It, this is on, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, that's correct. It was just a reference that was coded incorrectly, and so you have the cross-out page, which is page 240, which shows how it was referred incorrectly, and the correct numbers are right next to it, which is how it should be written.
Got it, thank you.
That's all that's happened.
That's all that is, okay.
Yep.
So a motion to waive that reading and adopt the ordinance as modified. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jeff, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mark. I heard Mark's voice, I heard Bonnie's voice, another tie. Uh, any other discussion regarding this?
Is this as a result of the new software program that we're starting to get all these, you know, mistakes or?
No, I, I think the new software program you're referring to, Granicus, is more to track things going forward. I'll, I'll let the clerk speak to it, although you weren't here during the recodification, but when you, when you go through and, and have a, a big code book like ours updated, there's gonna be some whoopses and.
Sure.
And you've seen several, let 'em come back. Jamie, any, any other thoughts?
I know many of these, and especially one of them tonight, was just that when they were recodifying, they repeated what they put on, like, tab A, they repeated the exact same thing on line B. So, without reviewing it ahead of time.
That, that wasn't a criticism, but I mean, it's just.
No, no, I just wanted, it's, yeah, it's, uh.
I think, I think it's great, you're catching mistakes, we'll modify them, so we're making sure we're on the, on the QT here, we're, we're doing everything, our job correctly. So, um, but I think Mark's point is also, are we gonna continue to see this? As you, as you find them, bring them to us, and obviously, we need to clean them up, so. With that said, I'm looking for a roll call again, because it's an ordinance, uh, modification. Jamie?
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wuhuski.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Thank you, guys, as I said, it would be a long night with a lot of resolutions and, um, ordinance changes. Let's go to K, it's a zoning code text amendment to add commercial kennels as a conditional use in the B2 business district, recommended by Plan Commission at its March eighth, eighth, excuse me, 2021 meetings. Uh, motion is to schedule a public hearing on June 21st, 2021, um, regarding that, and again, that's on page number, I believe it's 242. Um, so I'm looking for a motion to schedule a public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bill, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, any discussion?
Just a reminder, some, most of you recall, this was kind of old business, it came up from the March Plan Commission meeting. There is a specific party that was pursuing a purchase contract on a property where this would apply. Uh, the staff recommendation at the time was until we have an application and fee in hand and, and know that the individual has a purchase contract that's contingent upon the zoning, probably no point changing the ordinance. Well, it appears things have moved forward. Uh, there is an application, there is a live, uh, offer with zoning contingency. So, uh, this frankly makes, it makes sense to move forward now, if you're scratching your head like I was at first saying, wait a minute, this, this is already at council. Well, it was, and now it's back under the set of circumstances we all hoped to see.
Okay, so it was originally scheduled for June 7th, now it's moved to June 21st? Is that what it says on here? Was asked to schedule a public hearing at the June 7th meeting, or June 7th meeting, to move it to 21st. I got it, it's tonight's meeting, to move it to 21st. Thank you. Any other discussion regarding that?
Well, I think as the public becomes more aware, it only makes sense to. So it's a great additional development of, uh, new business in our community.
Now, this, understand, this is the code amendment. If this is passed, then the individual will need, correct me if I'm wrong, Elizabeth, but to make the actual application for conditional use, that too will go through the Plan Commission, they'll recommend to council, and you'll be holding a public hearing on an actual application. This is the change in the ordinance that even makes it possible to consider that use.
Okay, so June 21st is the public hearing we're voting on, all in favor, uh, June 21st, 6:00 PM, public hearing on this. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Thank you, ayes have it. Let's move to L, resolution authorizing the city to submit an idle site grant request to the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, or WEDC, and a motion to waive the reading and adopt that resolution. That resolution is in front of you, it's on page 243. Um, let's go ahead and do the motion in second, then we'll have discussion. Do I have a motion to waive and adopt that resolution right now?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Adam, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jay. Any discussion? Do we need to read the resolution? It's pretty lengthy in front of us, uh, or just wanna summarize that? Elizabeth?
Um, I was not planning on reading it, I was just gonna give you just a quick update. This is part of the process for the purchase of the Paragon property. Um, in our, um, negotiations, we promised that we would do our best effort to apply to WEDC, so this is a required part of that application. Um, you need to do a resolution, which means that we, as a city, will agree to be the entity through which the funds funnel through. And we've done this once before, if any of you remember that. Um, it's a, it's a template essentially, that we just kinda plug in who the applicant would be in the process through which we work with WEDC to do this. So we're still in the very early stages of applying, we're still working with the applicant to get the information we need, but this is our promise to do this, and so we, um, need this resolution to move forward.
And I've seen here, it's up to 500,000, I thought that number was short of that.
Well, that is, and that's a great question, the way it's phrased, it is up to 500,000, however, there's no guarantee that we would get that. Typically, the, what they're doing is 250, but we can always.
Okay, that's what I.
But this is the language in their template.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's what I thought I recognized last time.
But we can crink our fingers crossed.
Okay. All right, uh, any discussion on, any other discussion on this? Mark, I'll go to Adam.
Again, just a detail, Elizabeth, the AIM Manitowoc LLC, is that, is that a new, is that the same developer?
That's the person, that's the name of their LLC?
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah, uh-huh.
And then, uh, they, and you also know, clear in our negotiation, is this intent is the best interest we can to pursue this money, it doesn't negate the deal if this money doesn't come.
Correct, the purchase agreement says the city will make reasonable efforts both to apply for the idle sites grant and to pursue an amendment, uh, of TID-10 and possibly provide assistance if it's economically feasible. But in both, both cases, seeking this grant and pursuing possible TIF assistance, it's reasonable efforts.
Right, and to just reiterate a point you made, I believe, the, this grant had, was reduced, we think, to 250 as a regular, but there may be a possibility to maybe exceed that, but 250, they were aware that that was maybe this new ceiling, it's not half a million.
500,000 is what the grant could do in theory at its optimum, but 250 is the typical award that we've been seeing.
Typical number, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
But if, but if we're lucky, or can push it hard enough.
We hope we do.
We've got the authorization from you guys.
You know, things change, right?
Don't hold your breath, but.
Yeah, and we're still in the, and I know, we're still within that 90-day window when they bought it, that we have to.
We are, July 26.
That's why we're doing our due diligence right now, right?
Correct, yep.
And what is that date again, if you remind everybody?
90 days would be July 26 is what I'm calculating, 26, 27.
Okay.
For the date of agreement, so we're within our window.
Good, so that's why we gotta kinda hustle through this to help get our, our part of it done. Great, any other questions for Elizabeth or anybody else? Okay, again, it's a resolution authorizing our idle site grant, so Jamie, a roll call.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wuhuski.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Thank you, uh, moving on to M, request by Whiskey D's to extend noise and vibration ordinance section nine dash two dash five, subsections C and D with a maximum of 70 decibels, and to exceed the beer garden to the attached lot per ordinance section six dash one dash nine, subsection H2, for a wedding on June 12th, 2021, until 6:00 PM. So I'm looking for a motion to prove that request as submitted. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jeff, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I got a second by Jay, any discussion regarding this? Adam?
Um, I think it's a great idea, but I just wanna make sure that i, if music plays at 6:05, because they're wrapping something special up, we're not gonna be down their throats, are we? Just because that's a pretty early time to end a wedding, I don't know.
Oh, it is early.
If something might go just a fuzz later.
Yeah, it is. So the ordinance allows them actually to go up to 65 decibels at that, at that point in time anyways, so this gives them an additional five up until six. If you wanted to extend that, I don't think anybody's, I don't have a problem with it. Um, I know that they did this last year because they wanted to make sure that the police didn't arrive at the wedding and, and be a spoiler, and we don't want that either. So, you know, if you moved it up to give them a little bit of buffer, I don't think that, that there's a problem there. I was gonna make one other suggestion, and that is, is that, um, we also, um, look to, um, give them a variance on section B2B, which is about being able to hear the noise within side enclosed structure. So we're doing that for the vibrations, which is under D.
Right.
But I think it would just make sense that if we would also exempt B2B as well, so I'm just suggesting that be added to it.
So two, two things I'm hearing, and thank you for your feedback, um, one is, we have the opportunity to extend the time, and we can do that, and we can adjust that, um, motion and submission, and that, and that's kinda this handwritten, um, piece of paper you guys got, so we can extend that if we choose to, and I'll have to look for a motion to be rephrased to do that, along with adding B2B as also a exception, uh, within this motion, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm gonna actually stand corrected, the city manager reminded me that B2B only applies between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, so it would not be.
Okay, we'll cross that out, thank you.
Would not be necessary to do that.
Only if they go four hours past the end time.
Okay.
That ain't gonna happen.
So let's, so I need whoever made the motion, do you have the record of who made the motion? Okay, and so he has to rework the motion to add a new time, uh, extended time, and we'll have to second that and have that discussion. So it's not to 6:00 PM. Chief's saying we could actually.
No, no, what I'm saying is, that, the ref, the section the chief referenced tonight only applies to being able to hear it within an enclosed dwelling from 10.
No, I understand.
Oh, after 6 o'clock.
We're changing, we're, we're going back and changing the motion to the June wedding, June 12th, 2021, per Adam's suggestion.
Just a buffer period.
Chief said the same thing, so rather than a hard stop at 6 o'clock, do we extend this to possibly 7 or 8 o'clock, um, rather than 6 o'clock? So do we give them more time than what they originally asked for? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think they asked for it, and, and the likelihood is that they're probably gonna be done well before 6 o'clock, but, so if you wanted to do an hour just for, you know.
And frankly, I would.
Or weather, or anything can happen.
Yeah, I mean, and if the council approves it to 7, honestly, I think generally, our police department's gonna exercise some discretion and not at 7:05 be unplugging somebody's speaker.
Understand that, that's why we're, that's why we're giving a little bit of extra time here. I'm, do you wanna retract the motion and, uh, set up a new time on that, Jeff?
Yes.
So.
I'll retract that motion.
Okay, and you wanna, until what time then? What are you, what's your motion now have as a time?
I'd like to make a motion to extend it to 9 o'clock.
I'll second. I have a motion, I have a second, any more discussion regarding that? Go ahead, chief.
If I may add, I would do this for the purposes of the event that they're looking to do, so, yeah, so it's not that the event gets done at 5 o'clock and then we're, we're good till 9 o'clock for any other noise, I mean, that, that would be my suggestion. This is for the event.
Got it, for the event that's cited, which is the, uh, wedding, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
You just never know with mother nature, it could rain during the afternoon and they may end up forced to be extending it, and we don't wanna be the.[1599.33] we don't want to be the.
Yep.
Right. Got a motion, we got a second. Any other discussion regarding this?
I like the idea of being flexible and give them a little extra time, but we don't have to give them, ask for six, we don't have to give them three hours. I, you know, they're, they're, you know, this has been kind of a sore spot in the community a little bit, so why don't we be flexible and, black people.
I'd rather err on the side of caution and give them the extra time. Big deal, it's nine, it's still late at 9:00.
Okay.
My, my discussion to counter yours is it's one night, it's a wedding, and it's to, it's allowing them to enjoy their festivities without feeling like they're having to pack up and shut it down by a certain time. So that's, that's my counter. It's not that we're, we're not suggesting this all summer long, we're not suggesting this every night, it's one night, June 12th, for a wedding. Any other discussion? Because this again is a request for a variance to the ordinance, I need a roll call, Jamie.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wohuski.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Koch.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and may you have a blessed wedding if we are, if we're not invited. And enjoy yourself.
I was not.
Let's go to N, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, COVID grant agreement between the State of Wisconsin Department of Administrations and the City of Two Rivers. That is in our docket as well, I believe.
Oh, yes, starting on 250, page 253.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to sign that agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Adam, any discussion? Do you want to explain a little bit more in detail about this?
Elizabeth, you want to speak to that? Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, good work, they got it, so, yeah.
Well, this is just the, the finally, us finally receiving the contract for the senior center improvements that were discussed way back when for the drive-through window that we'll, we will be adding some more accessible doorways for less contact and the parking lot adjustment to accommodate the drive-through window. This is just simply their template contract that DOA uses for the $88,000 that we were awarded and we discussed previously per your approval, and so we finally now have a contract. And so it looks like we just need the signature from the city and we will submit it and they will sign it and return it, and we can move forward. We have until March 2023 to complete the contract, or complete the construction.
And is that these 23 pages that are included in this contract?
Yes.
22 pages?
It's, it's long.
Okay, great. So I'm looking for, we already have a motion to sign the agreement and a second. Do we have any other discussion? Now that we know details, yes, Adam?
Is there an expected timetable as to when this project starts? It wants this get signed?
Yes, there is a calendar within the 23 or four pages, but it says to start around July, but it does not mandate that we have our construction started. If you look at page, well, it's 13 of the contract itself.
Page 265.
In your packet. Okay, thank you.
Under the scope of work.
Yes, exactly. So we have that lined out, lined up for us here within a calendar format. So it goes month by month of our obligations for all of the administrative stuff that goes along with this. So it does indicate July 31 of 2020, begin construction or start program. So, you know, it's not feasible for us to start this July, so we do have until March of 2023 to complete construction. So we will move forward as quickly as we can, knowing how committed companies are for us to go out to bids, to actually get them to be able to do the work. So it's going to be a little bit of time.
Did you say it's not feasible to start at that time, or is?
Oh, I don't think.
I didn't hear you.
No, I'm sorry. I don't believe that we're going to be able to start this July. I just don't think it's going to happen that quickly, but we do have until March of 2023, given the construction, you know, how difficult it is to get folks to get work done.
Okay.
So it'd be a great idea, back on the questions that are out here is start anticipated finish date so we can let the citizens know, because this is really a nice benefit for them, especially through the winter season where they don't have to necessarily go in, so that'd be, be great to see what we can do. But we also know we're limited to the available skills and trades out there right now and how backed up they are.
Right, and we, we could not start until we got this contract, so.
Makes you nervous on contractor availability, it makes you nervous on cost, just about like any other construction going on right now.
Any other questions? Mark?
Maybe this is an editorial, but why does the state have to make this so complicated, so many pages in this contract?
Elizabeth is leaving the building right now because of that.
And in fairness to the state, it's federal Community Development Block Grant, and a lot, a lot of that, a lot of those regulations and bureaucratic requirements just roll downhill with the federal money.
Be a good conversation for our representatives.
I should still state that.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay, so all in favor of getting this done, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Let's go to O, authorize, authorization for fire department to proceed with the pre-build conference to develop final specifications for the purchase of the new ladder slash pumper truck from Spartan Fire Apparatus, the department's recommended supplier for a replacement for the city's 1992 aerial ladder truck. Such final specifications and purchase terms to be incorporated to the purchase contract to be brought back for final city council approval. The estimate right now is a $1.2 million purchase, $400,000 down. The payment is budgeted in 2021's fire capital budget presented by the fire chief. So a motion is to authorize the fire department to work with its recommended suppliers, Spartan Fire Apparatus, and he did hand us the sheet of the three different bids that he'll walk us through, on final specifications and proposed purchase contract based on Spartan's proposal. So first, first let's do the motion and the second.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mark, and we'll let the discussion open up to the chief.
First, I'd like to say thank you to the council and thank you to the residents of the City of Two Rivers for giving us the ability to research this and present this to you. This is a valuable piece that's going to be a, have a lasting effect for the community and hopefully for the fire protection and make the community much safer. So we started out with our current truck, it's a 1992 Pierce, it's approximately 30 years old, it's a 105-foot ladder, does have a current pump on it, there is no water tank on it, has some ground ladders and a bunch of other tools on it that we've accumulated throughout the years. I wanted to cover why do we need to replace it? Frankly, it's getting old, 30 years is a long time for an apparatus to be around. It's recommended that apparatus over 25 years be phased out, we're five years past that already. We've kept it in excellent service up until this point. Unfortunately, some of the replacement parts are getting hard to come by and maintenance costs are starting to increase. So we've had several maintenance, several significant maintenance issues that we're looking at, and we'd kind of, we look at it in terms of it's better to probably part with the truck at this point, give it to a, a department that may not use it nearly as much as we do, that would be great for them, and to get a new piece at this time. We did look at actually refurbishing the truck at one point, it is a reduced cost. Unfortunately, the way that it's viewed is that the truck would be still considered a 1992 vintage, even though the thing may be completely rebuilt from tip to tip. So unfortunately, that doesn't really help us in any of our needs, especially for insurance reasons and things like that. So it wouldn't actually be a benefit to the city to do that because we'd have to refurbish it in another 10 years, give or take. So throughout the county, we look at, the City of Two Rivers has a ladder truck, so does the City of Manitowoc, they are currently considering repurchasing another one as well. The City of Kiel has one, they all have 100-foot ladder trucks, and the City of Mishikot has a 75-foot ladder truck. So we started this search in early 2020, we wanted to kind of run the gambit, not, not narrowing down on one specific trucks, we actually looked at 10 different manufacturers, consisted of approximately five people, one of my assistant chiefs, Chad Kakis, Captain Schrader, who's our, he's in charge of our mechanical maintenance program, firefighter, paramedic, craniac, Gunnerson, and Miller. Those are the 10 different manufacturers that we looked at, wanted to get a well-rounded view of everything. From those, we started to specify different things that we were looking at. So we really looked at a lot of what the community needed and what some of our demographics are. We have an elderly community with some mobility problems, we have some large structures over three stories with some of these types of individuals in them, make rescue a very, very difficult problem for us, and due to our staffing, staffing, the way that we are, it takes an awful long time for it to get additional help to scenes, not only from us but from neighboring communities as well. So we were looking at a truck that we can actually really benefit the community with. So we were looking at high-quality manufacturers, we want this piece of apparatus to last at a minimum of 25 years, hopefully for an additional five years past that, so that we can continue the trend. We do understand it's a significant cost for the, for the city to buy. We've also looked at what would be the best, so the difference between a straight stick and an aerial platform. So out of those two, I know it's kind of gibberish, but we currently have a straight stick, has minimal weight bearing at the tip, provides good for, it's basically a big ladder that goes up and down. One of the big pitfalls of it is that technically you have to climb up and down it, which kind of makes sense, but it doesn't necessarily offer a whole lot past that. You can provide elevated water streams, which is fantastic, but we felt that one of the better trucks to look at would be a platform. What we mean by that is a platform basically has the bucket on the end of it, okay? Out of that, you can have two to three rescuers in it at one time, you can actually load somebody in, most of them have doors that open up on the sides, you can fit a wheelchair in them, so you can have somebody who is mobility limited in there, and then you can actually take that and you can take the ladder and actually touch the ground with it, so you can unload the person without having to carry them down any steps or rungs or anything like that. Makes it also, it's much more versatile, you can use it as a high anchor point for ropes, do rescues, you can, which we've had to do in the past for water rescues and things like that, and it has a lot of capabilities for not only now but also for the future. To give you an idea, these are some of the pictures of what an aerial, aerial bucket truck can do. So as I was talking before, you look in the lower right-hand corner, can actually put it out pretty much completely at 90 degrees, can actually touch the ground with it, it offers many, many rescue potentials and capabilities. We actually do have several water rescues that we've done with our current ladder, and this would just give us a, a increased sense of safety with that, not only for the rescuers but also for the people in those situations. Request for proposal, we actually narrowed it down to five different manufacturers, Pierce, Camey, Seagrave, Spartan, and Ferreira. We were looking at a minimum of 100-foot aerial platform truck with a 300-gallon tank, it's not something we currently have, but unfortunately, it was actually more money to eliminate it from the current, from the ladder truck bid, so we decided to keep it. A little bit bigger fire pump because our water sources are so excellent here, so we know that they'll support them, and also for some of the large structures that we have to, to increase the fire, fire elimination hazards. And we wanted it to be as mechanical as possible, we've, we wanted to make it so that we kind of eliminated as many sensors so gremlins in the future to go wrong with little problems, so we wanted to make it pretty mechanical. Out of those five, we ended up getting three bids back, two of the manufacturers decided not to. We evaluated all the, the separate apparatus, making sure that everything met the spec, what was going to be the best for us, and we compared everything with warranties, build time, any kind of options that they offered and things like that, and we determined that the one that was best suited for us was the Spartan. Came in a little bit under 1.2, I believe it was 119 with, with some equipment that we were looking to purchase. Build time is approximately a year on it, and we're hoping that they'll price will go down a little bit when we go for the final bid walkthrough where they, they sit down and we go through every bit of the spec one by one. So, any questions I can answer for you?
Adam?
I got a couple. So first, it won't be any more than 1.19, the one that's shown in this diagram?
Should not, yes.
But it could come, but it could come down.
Should not be any more than 1.2, yep.
Okay. And a question I get asked a lot from people out in the public is, how many times do we use a ladder truck? And I know you don't have the data on top of you, but do you have an estimate of maybe how many times per month, so that when people ask, I can say?
It, it is hard to say the exact reason, the, the thing that's, that's pivotable with a ladder truck is when we need to use it. The unfortunate thing is when we need to use it is the most important, because when we actually launch it and we, we need it for a rescue-type scenario, you're talking Manitowoc being the full, the nearest full-time fire department away from us is only 15 minutes away, so I, I hate to say if it's your life in the balance, would you like them, but it's one of those things that when we have needed it, whether it's for a water rescue or for somebody rescuing somebody from a fire, it has been unseen and it's been very capable to do that, so.
And that's one thing I learned now that I didn't know you used it for water rescue, so that's another thing that I can explain to people when they do come and ask that question.
I think it would be very important also to take exactly what you have here and post it on the, on our Facebook site because it is a lot of money, and I, and I think that people want, want to understand what else it's used for, so I think that was very beneficial. Any other questions for the chief?
Just a comment to reinforce what you said, imagine a burning building and a, and a person, perhaps elderly person, a little overweight in a wheelchair, the safety of that platform and that ladder truck to get him out of the building may save lives, or a small kid falling through the ice, that could save a lot of lives versus the ladder.
Versus come on out onto the tip of the ladder, which I think would petrify most of us.
Yeah. The good news is we're looking at making a decision that hopefully will last 25 or 30 years here, guys, and we won't see it for about another year, so we're knocking on wood and hoping and praying that the truck we have today can continue to do what it needs to do for the next year.
Yeah. And to make sure this process limits suppliers, we've got to do this in order to get the, our line up to, in order to get the equipment you need.
Correct.
I look forward to seeing the truck when I'm 96, still working, okay? Can I just go on record to say that?
Sounds great.
I'm going on record, I bet the truck will look better in 96.
Truck will look better than me at 96, I could go on record with that, too.
When they take your equipment, I guarantee it will.
Thank you, Mark. Any other discussion for the chief? Councilman Delkey. I'm sorry, Jeff, thank you for throwing that out.
No, that comes to $48,000 a year for that truck, and I know we had talked a little bit about the refurbishing cost, and you said insurance costs just keep rising? Any indication of how much that would actually be if we were to refurbish it and with the added insurance cost?
So the insurance cost I was actually referring to is the, is the ISO rating, so it's insurance service office. We have, currently have an ISO rating of 33X, means gibberish, right? So ISO rates in a municipality based on 1 through 10, and then the X means that sometimes they have structures that are a little outside the 1,000 feet between hydrants. Being a 33X going, I can pick on some of our neighbors a little bit, don't hold it against me, but one of our neighbors is the town of Two Rivers. The town of Two Rivers has an ISO rating of 66X. We currently got pestered with a resident who was in the town of Two Rivers, but he was close to the borders of the City of Two Rivers because he pays an approximate $250 per year at his residence for the fire coverage, even though we would probably respond to those as well. That's not including all the, the individual residences, not to mention the businesses that would pay an increased fee for their insurance as well. Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you exactly what that is. To refurbish the truck would cost about 600-ish.
Without the platform.
Without the platform. Without the tank.
Right. Basically, all of us would be paying incremental insurance based on having a different rating, is what you're saying?
Correct.
So, okay. That was more for information for the public, but I do know past administration had a program where you could have refurbished this and they snap a new date, you have a brand-new truck.
Yeah, and the, and the ISO rating doesn't.
And that's gone.
They, they take, yeah, they take it as the, it's still the base year of whatever the vehicle is, and we tried to save every penny we could, we really did, so.
Any other questions for the chief?
Again, this will be back for final action. It's a big purchase, it's not a competitive bid requirement, nor did the city set it up as bids, it's proposals, that's how, how it's been presented, so if the count, and a lot of work's gone into it, but before further engaging with the preferred vendor, the whole idea is get the council's endorsement, but chief will be back with that final recommendation, final pricing.
Thank you. Jeff, another question?
Did you say Manitowoc was going to, in the process of ordering, you want to?
I believe so.
Is there any chance that we could order both of them at the same time and get a discount?
Unfortunately, they ordered a Seagrave, Seagrave wouldn't entertain our bid.
Oh, okay.
So, and they're also purchasing two fire engines as well.
I'm just trying to save money, man.
Totally on your page, I get it, so.
Okay, so because as we're going to see final, we don't have to do a roll call tonight, I'll just do an all-in-favor. All in favor of authorizing the fire department to work with its recommended supplier on final specifications and a proposed purchase contract that we'll get back to us to look at and approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, thank you, chief, for walking us through that and continuing to protect the City of Two Rivers. Let's move to P, Comfort Resolution directing the staff and the plan commission to proceed with actions necessary to prepare amendment number two to the project plan for tax incremental financing district number 10 to allow for a developer grant to assist redevelopment of the former Paragon Electric property. So this is, again, within our 90-day window period, we got to.
Yeah, this is, this is the other piece we talked about earlier, of the city's reasonable efforts to line up assistance, and I'd asked Elizabeth, and it is in your packet, the third page, well, actually the first page after this resolution packet, page 277, you'll see the timeframe is such that, again, if the, if the Herald Times doesn't screw up a legal ad or something along the way, that the matter could come to city council, excuse me, July 19, and the, the zone, the joint review board could meet as soon as the next And the, the zone, the joint review board could meet as soon as the next day. We would ask that they meet that week by the 23rd to take final action on it. So, and we've, we've never had a problem with the joint review board getting together promptly. They're, they're very good about that, so.
Great. This is just to take the action, move the thing forward, too.
Right.
I'm looking for a motion to waive the reading and adopt that resolution.
Moved.
Thank you, Bonnie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tracy. Any other discussion regarding this? Again, it's package number 275 and 276 in your documents tonight. Adam?
Is there a cost to doing this?
There, there is. There's certainly administrative, staff costs will be legal review by Quarles and Brady. I'm going to guess about 1,500 legal ad. Not counting the staff costs, that's probably a couple thousand dollars into amending the plan.
Now, does that cost start ticking after they sign or after they purchase? Or are we going to start paying for that prior to?
City would incur that cost right up front. Now, we, if, if there's enough headroom in the TIF, it could be recouped as an administrative and legal cost.
My worry is what if they don't purchase the building? So we're just, we'd be on the hook for losing more money.
The only, the only thing I could say that's, you're right. First thing I would say is you're right. It would be an amendment that would allow for develop, direct developer grant to assist not just this prospective purchaser, and I think the draft provides for that, Elizabeth is coming up to the mic, but could if, if things didn't pan out and there was a buyer B that said, gee, I need TIF assistance? Because right now, this TIF plan doesn't provide for any developer grants other than the one that was done for Holy Family Memorial's new office building. The rest was pretty much all infrastructure money in, in the district.
Right, and so, correct. This could be used for a purchaser of the building. It will be a pay-as-you-go basis for assistance. But one of the items that we just, that was mentioned earlier about development on Memorial Drive is listed as one of the blighted properties in the original TID-10. So it was, it's a blight TIF and a redevelopment TIF. So there could be other things that could be addressed as a part of this process. So this would allow us to continue to move forward with addressing areas on Memorial Drive because those properties are already included within this district. So we could continue to move forward with looking at some of those areas.
Yes, any other, Mark?
Adam, Murray's is a good, a good point. But Adam, I would point out that L and P gives us flexibility to continue to maybe solicit somebody else to get this property off our hands. And also the non-refundable deposit that we put in place will recoup some of the costs of administration. If they do back out, they don't, they lose their deposit, which I believe was $25,000, right?
Correct.
Any other questions? Again, it could be setting up a, and I know why just questions coming up regarding the TIF because we've started a few of them before. Spent some money and they're sitting idle, not doing anything right now. So the question is, we're spending money again, but this is a property we're trying to unload. So we need to do it for obviously purposes of this offer. And hopefully, if this falls through, somebody else.
And now we're really putting?
I see your concern, Adam.
And we're putting the pressure on them, too, to deliver the plan that they owe us to be able to complete this whole L and P process, too, right?
We're, we're acting in good faith and we expect the buyer is as well.
Okay. So because it is a adopting of this resolution, roll call, Jamie?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Hi, boys, what's going?
Oh, aye. So I didn't hear.
Aye.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach. Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Thank you for all the work you guys are doing to help us through this process and setting the timeline that you shared with us as well so we can kind of all keep track of what's going on. Thank you, guys, for passing that. Let's move to Q. We got Q and we added R, so we've got two more here, guys. Q is city manager's appointments and reappointments to boards, committees and commissions. And he's got a couple he's recommending.
Making some progress. There's still some vacancies to be filled. Would recommend to the council the appointment of Kristen Lee to a vacancy on the plan commission for a term expiring May 1, 2024. Greg Conan, who is on the BIDC, to also serve on the CDA, which typically meets concurrently with that body for a term to expire May 1 of 2024. And that replaces, or is, is the term that was held by Tracy Coach as a citizen before she became a council member, member of that committee. There are still vacancies on the committee on aging, environmental advisory board, Central Park 365 planning committee. And I have put out a request to that committee's members last week. They had a meeting and quite honestly, I would love to see a, we had one member that had to resign who was, fell in the category of parent of young children. I'd love to find another person for the committee who has young children because some of the features we're looking at in the park are oriented to that age group. But I would welcome any help finding that. We need, then we need two appointments to the zoning board of appeals. But would ask for approval of the plan commission and CDA appointments as listed tonight.
It's a motion to approve the appointments as recommended by the city manager. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Any other discussion regarding those appointments?
Encourage the listening community to step forward and send your names to Greg's office.
Our goal is to try to get this nailed down in the next, by end of the month or something?
Honestly, yes. Get it, yes.
Again, you can't force people, but you can only ask people to help, volunteer and join. The committees don't meet that often. So if you've got questions regarding how often it meets, what your role would, is going to be, please ask Greg or Lisa at, at his office. She can, they can get you the answer.
We'll be happy to inundate you with information as we have some of these appointees.
Great, so I got a motion, second?
Good information, not just inundate.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. And let's go back to R. R is the license that we talked about on the car cruise. And really, the boundaries were the question, I think, more than anything, which was from 15th Street all the way down, just remember, 22nd Street? And how would we organize or manage the open carry of both potentially a Friday and a Saturday? And how would we cordon off, if you would, that section so that we're managing it a little different, especially when you go all the way down by QuickTrip? So chief, you want to share with us?
Sure. So two things. You mentioned about the, the length of the event up to 22nd Street. So the street closure permit that we have with the state does allow us to go up to 22nd Street. I know that there's been some discussion internally with some of the staff of the police department, as well as the city manager and Main Street, about the 2100 block of Washington Street and maybe some complexities there with QuickTrip. So if we were to utilize that block, certainly we'd be pushing everything up right up to 22nd Street where there's a considerable amount of traffic coming through. But probably more importantly, the access to and from QuickTrip. They do have two other exits, but Jefferson Street is likely to be parked up on both sides to make it fairly narrow. So those who are not familiar with the area may not look at utilizing Jefferson Street with the additional traffic on 22nd Street. Getting off of Jefferson onto 22nd may be problematic. And so then that pretty much means that all QuickTrip traffic's got to kind of come in and out off of 22nd Street. So as much as the car show might like to have or endure, perhaps maybe even need that space for the cars, I think what the staff is recommending that, that we not utilize the 2100 block for the purposes of QuickTrip and the amount of traffic that they are going to get. Go ahead and take a question.
Right up.
Can we access some side roads so we can avoid that? Maybe even especially downtown here?
Yeah, so I, I don't think that there really is any major issue as far as you saying utilizing the side roads for the car show?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think that there would be any major issue from our perspective on that. I would probably want to stay away from, you know, the residential side roads. So more like, you know, 17th, 18th.
Right, I'm talking maybe like even around downtown where the community houses?
I think that that would make a lot of sense and.
Help them, but yet avoid the, the, the QuickTrip because that, that would be a very cluster, you know what? Especially with all traffic going on, on 22nd Street there?
Yeah, so I agree 100%. We've, we've thought about that. That's just getting Main Street on board to do that.
And we, because we also have Beach Bash going on that weekend. I agree, I think 22nd needs to be kind of cleared, not only for a QuickTrip, but also for easy access. And you could have a lot of traffic.
A lot of traffic right there at the intersection. And every, and if you have, have people and everything right up to those class-three barricades and stuff like that, it might present a safety concern, too.
Is one, so you mentioned stopping at potentially at 21st? And then Adam brought up a good suggestion. Again, talking to Main Street, the possibility of wrapping around the community center area to Adams a little bit and wherever we can go on the sides?
Yeah, so we would continue to have those conversations with Main Street and the other department heads that are involved in the event to make sure that everybody's on the same page and that we can do that. But I really don't see that as a major issue.
And I'd suggest, I guess, there is one more regular meeting before the event, but the council may want to consider tonight approving the request up to 21st Street with the directive to have that, for police department staff to have that additional dialogue with Main Street. Then if there are additional local street closures, which aren't nearly the big deal, but the Washington Street closure is because DOT is involved, we could bring that back next time. The other aspect that Mr. Bittner had brought, is that?
That's the other point that I was going to address.
Please.
But I like that idea. Maybe we do one at a time. I like the idea going to 21st Street and to, because I don't recall ever seeing cars parked that far up the street anyway.
It was approved last year, as I, as I recall, for up to 22nd. They didn't need it?
No, they didn't.
They didn't use it?
It was like maybe a block beyond City Hall and that's it. There was not a massive number of cars anyway.
Yeah, last year, we obviously, due to a lot of things, the car show was a little bit.
I'd suggest, Mr. President, that we go up to 21st as a recommendation and address.
But I'd like to make sure both things are addressed in this final motion, which is also the 20, Friday and Saturday, correct?
Yes, so.
Sorry, Mark, I was just going to hold off here.
Yeah, so the question was, is have we done that in previous years? And yes, we have allowed alcohol in the length of the event on the night of the car cruise, Friday. To be honest with you, we're not really certain what we did the year before. The recollection is, is that we only allowed it within the areas of the beer tents or the areas where they were selling beer. But we looked at it as, from a consistency standpoint. And as long as the staffing from Main Street, which we've been told that they will have, have available to police the, the alcohol consumption and where that takes place, as long as those things are in place, we're okay with making things consistent. So what that means is, and what we've been told from Main Street, is that they would have personnel manning the barricades on the side streets so that, and there would be signage posted on these barricades that would clearly indicate where people can and can't bring alcohol. And so, and that worked out, from what I've been told from my staff, is that worked out well. There wasn't any problems with it on the night of the show. So from a consistency point, standpoint, and the fact that those signs are kind of already there, we're okay with the fact of trying to do that on the Saturday. Obviously, it's a longer period of time, but that, we're just talking time. So as long as all those same mechanisms are placed, there's no reason to believe that anything should change.
So both Friday and Saturday with the changes or with the recommendations that were put up by stopping at 21st, possibly using some side streets, allowing you guys to have the conversation and dialogue with Main Street to get that approved. Then if we made a motion of that, like that, we could pass that tonight and knowing that it's under a short timeframe, it's only two weeks away. So we've got to be able to have those dialogues pretty quickly.
Right. Better, better than tabling the whole thing?
Yeah, we don't want to table a whole thing.
To at least know there's permission. The only thing that's in question is that one block.
Okay, so if we got, is that clear? Okay, so do we have a motion of that regard?
You said Jefferson Street was parked, well, you have a lot of cars parked there. There's no parking street on Jefferson Street during that event, is there?
Well, actually, there, there will be because we've been utilizing the last couple of years. Monroe Street has the detour route. So there will be an allowance for vehicles on Jefferson Street.
Any, do I have a motion in, in regards to all those nuances we just talked about?
I'll make that motion with all the, all the added language.
Yeah, how was that for a motion? Pretty good? Okay, just want to make sure the, it's going to go in your legal book? Okay. All right, perfect. All right. Any other discussion? Mark, you going to say something?
I, I can just say that I guess I'm okay with this, but I'm going to tell you that, and I've been around too long, maybe. But previously, we were reluctant to release Saturday. And I also remember chief, previous chiefs saying the police didn't want to have to endorse that or, or enforce that rule on Saturday, all day Saturday. That's eight hours of drinking on the streets.
Yeah, we certainly don't have the staffing to enforce that. And that's why it's going to be incumbent on Main Street to provide what they say they're going to provide and what they did provide on Friday night, which appear to be effective. But make no, make no bones about it. If there are problems or issues that arise that cause us to second guess or think about doing something differently as we move forward in the future, we will certainly do that or recommend that.
We've done it on Saturday before, probably in a low attendance year last year. But the Pete, the folks that enforce it, who are not shy about telling you when they have concerns, then won't be if there's a problem. As I reported earlier, talking to the assistant chief about it, there have not been problems and there's a willingness to work, that's to work with the organization. We're being asked to be flexible on a lot of things. Yep, same thing.
And we will have staff out there. And so if there are problems that need to be addressed at the time, they will be.
Okay, so we got a motion, we got a second. Any word of discussion? If not, we'll go to do a vote. All right, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you for information only. Can I just tell them what it is? Council meeting June 21st, 6 o'clock. Council work session, June 28th at 6 o'clock. Greg, you want to talk about number 14?
Actually, we, we'd put that on there because as of Friday, the party that has submitted an offer on 2023 Washington Street, the old Unimart station just south of QuickTrip, had expressed an interest in possibly coming to address the council in open session[1705.53]